Thank you very much. We will start this meeting at six thirty-two P M on July nineteenth. Councilmore Carter, would you please leave us in the pledge of allegiance?
I sure will. Everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau.
Present.
Councilmember Crosby. Councilmember Carter.
Yes, I'm here, present.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Present.
Mayor Heffernan.
Present. Do we have any announcements, Mr. Russi?
I am not aware of anybody that has requested. J R.
Well, sir, we do not have any requests.
You know, I think I'll do this now real quick. The let me get on my phone here. The girls Girls Little League softball, Girls Little League softball team, U twelve, took the, had won the California State Title, and they're advancing to the West Region Tournament in San Bernardino, representing California. And if they place in the top two, they will represent the West in the Little League World Series, which has never happened to a team from Laverne. So congratulations to them, their parents. Absolutely, they do go this far that basically they are, they'll be on ESPN, and it's going to be a big, huge thing. I did a minute with the mayor with it. Let everybody know because I heard about it on the weekend. It's just so amazing for our young, young children. And then the girls softball league had a very good season. A couple of them went to some playoffs, and they're starting up their season. I think I'll post that. I think it's July twenty-sixth. And let me double check that. Sorry, guys. But just congratulations. Now, Mr. Crosby, would you like to say something now, right at the beginning of the meeting, or wait till the other?
I'm all good.
Okay, anyway, I'll post that, and we'll get that information to the city about the tryouts for girl softball. But congratulations, all. That, that has to do with the, you know, it doesn't happen without a village like our city, and between the, the girls who are talented, the coaches, the families, the grandparents, and the city also behind them. So congratulations to all. With that, we go to consent calendar, item five. Anything been pulled, Mr. Russi?
Nothing as of about an hour ago. J R.
Our request received, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the consent calendar? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar, including a very cool red fire truck.
I'll second it.
Second, roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau.
Hi.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Heffernan.
Yes. But just a quick comment here. I want to thank, first of all, our staff, but also for our council, and also for the employee groups. These salary increases, the new salary charts, were because of Measure L V, which we did all vote in, in a very high mark of success on that. And I just want to say thank you to, to my council, also to the management, for sticking to what they've said about median salary. We really value our employees, and we value the fact that we try to keep a good living wage, good benefits, and great working conditions. And so, kudos to all of you. This didn't happen overnight. This has been going on for some time. We're actually giving it early because we do value our employees, and I think this is just one of those things that shows that we do care. And even in this pandemic time, we're able to give raises. And I mean, we may not be able to in the near future, but right now, we're, we're able to, and Measure L V, our city's a lot stronger than we anticipated, and we move forward. But congratulations to all, and thank you, council, for your support. Thank you, city and staff, and all the employee groups for agreeing to this increase. Thank you. With that, we move to we're moving quickly, guys, public hearings. Mr. Russi.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will take this item. You have, every year, we have to hold a public hearing regarding our assessment districts. And this is the time we set aside for that and noticed it. And an assessment district, for the benefit of the audience, is particular areas of our community where there is an individual benefit to the homes that are immediately adjacent around it. And so they are assessed a charge based on the benefit that they receive. It's particularly usually a landscape district around where you see some of those green areas that are within there. It's not necessarily the responsibility of the city to pay for that, but it's the individual homeowners that benefit of it, benefit from it. There are roughly nine areas in Laverne that are designated in different charges for that. I will go through all except for one of these areas with all of you. And then Councilmember Carter has a conflict on one of those because she has, her property is subject to the assess, subject to the assessment, and will have to recuse herself. So I will take the first three items, and essentially, within those, there are only two that are being requested for an increase. All the other assessments are going to remain the same as the prior year. And the two areas that are going to see an increase, one is thirty units, and it, which is Hart Horn Ranch, which is the newer development that is on the east side of Fruit, and it's going to see a C P I adjustment of just over two percent. And then the other area is Laverne Heights, which is the area that's managed up on the finger on the, I'll call it the west side of Esperanza, as you're going up the hill. And that is going up by thirty dollars per year. So those are the only two areas that are seeing an increase within the, the zones that we are discussing in this initial. And as I said, this is a public hearing, so it is something that you do have to give an opportunity for the public to express any concerns. It has to be done at this meeting so that we can communicate it to the county, so it can go on the tax assessment rolls for next, next fiscal year. With that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions at council before opening public hearing.
Council, do we have any questions for staff before we go to public hearings? We'll go ahead and we'll open up the public hearings. J R.
Mr. Mayor, we did not receive any requests prior to the meeting, and I just hit refresh on the email and didn't see any requests in there either. We also checked our spam filter real quick, and nothing was in there.
Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Council, any questions for staff? Then I will ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Councilmember Carter, thank you. Second.
A second.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. With that, roll call, please. Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau. Muted.
Hi.
Thank you. Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Aye to the recorded vote.
Thank you. Mayor Heffernan.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
And on these next two, Councilmore Carter will have to recuse herself. Is that correct?
Yes, she will have to leave the room, and J R will be taking her out now.
Leave our Zoom, Councilmember Carter. I think she has left the other room. Okay.
So, and again, this is the area, it's a similar assessment district, but it is for the slopes and weed abatement management in the area adjacent to Councilmember Carter's home, and then the other homes in that particular area. And again, there is no change in the level of assessment. It's the same level that's been there since nineteen ninety-two. So we are just seeking for a continuation of that to perform the activities of doing slope maintenance in that area.
So we'll take this as a separate, we want to go ahead. Any questions for staff before we go to public comment? We'll go and go to public comment. J R.
Well, sir, nothing received prior to the meeting, and we still have not received any requests.
We'll go ahead and close public comment. Council, do we have any other questions for staff before we go to this? That would be a no. Then I would like a motion, please.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash sixty.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. A second. Councilmember Lau, we have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Lau.
Hi.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Heffernan.
Yes. Thank you. Motion carried. So we move to item seven, other matters, confirmation of weed abatement clearance charges for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Russi.
Yes, we will take this one on other matters with Councilmember Carter out because she has a conflict in this as well. So this is the final step of the weed abatement charges. If you remember going back to March, we identify the properties, we have the public hearing that have been identified either by the fire department or county ag commissioner that need to be inspected to be determined if there's weed clearance that needs to go on. There's the inspection that is done, and then this is the final confirmation of what the charges are that will actually be added on the tax rolls for next year, based on the work that was done. There are eighty-one properties that require an inspection. There were only three that required some type of activity by the county to do, which means that the other properties, property owners chose to either do it themselves or provide another vendor to do it. The county just provides the service in the event that they don't do it by a certain date. So of the three, I would point out, two of those are on Sierra Laverne's property. So the, the former golf course, so that activity is being taken care of in those vacant lands by the, the county on their behalf. And then the third one is up north, and I remember the exact address of it, but it was a private residence as well. So, so those are the properties where the assessment is. The other charges that you're seeing listed of the forty-two dollars are simply the charge for the inspection that needed to be done.
Very good. We have any questions for staff, council? Seeing none, we'll open up public hearing. J R.
J R, you there?
Sorry about that. We had somebody calling in that's having trouble getting on. So yes, nothing received prior to the meeting. I don't see any hand raised, and nothing in the spam filter.
And we shall go ahead and close a lot of attendees tonight. It's nice to see. We will close this and go back to council. Any questions for staff, council, before we move on to the side? Then I need a motion to approve.
I move that council confirms listed charges and direct the county auditor to enter the assessment against the parcels of land on the current assessment rule.
Second.
For Lau. Thank you very much. Roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau. Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter. Oh, sorry, I was looking at, ah.
You've been waiting a long time for that, that one.
I think she abstains. She recused herself. She abstains.
Want to make sure everybody's paying attention. All right. Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Hi.
Mayor Heffernan.
Yes.
Sorry, I was being confused because Eric Shear has his hand raised, and J R, I don't know if that's something that he's trying to come in for something.
I'm not sure either. I was kind of looking to see if he texted me and or.
Oh, that's, oh, he just took it off.
Okay, we're good. Sorry. Want to make sure we weren't missing something. So, all right, well, we can bring Councilmember Carter back in.
Hello, Councilmember Carter. Welcome back again. So now we are going to mix it up a little bit. Is that correct, Mr. Russi?
Yes, due to scheduling commitments, I had neglected to move the Gascon item to the first item on your other matter. So if the council would be so kind as to move that up, it would be appreciated.
Ready.
Okay, this was an item that was, as you know, was requested by Councilmember Carter. So I know that she had some comments that she would like to share, and then I know we have somebody from the district attorney's office that will be available to answer questions to council, and then we can open it up for public comment, because I know we have a significant amount of interest in this item. That, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you. I asked for this item to be added to our agenda because Laverne needs to stand strong for a safe community. We talk about public safety being the main reason people enjoy living here. That has been jeopardized, and we need to come together for our residents. Gascon is not following the law of the state in its easing punishment on the worst offenders in harming Victor, victims and their families. What has happened to justice for the victims? I want our residents to feel safe at all times, whether they are walking their children to school or if they're tucking them in bed at night. I want to thank all the residents at this time that have written emails to all of us or called us because all input for or against is very important to all of us. So I want to thank everyone for their involvement. Let's join the other twenty-two-plus cities in voting no confidence on D A Gascon. At this time, though, I would like to introduce a guest speaker, Jonathan Hatami, who is a deputy district attorney for Los Angeles County. After he speaks, then, Mr. Mayor, you can open it up for the council questions and then public comments. Jonathan, welcome.
Thank you, also Member Carter, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council members, for having me. I appreciate your time and the ability to, to I lost you there for a minute. Sorry. Sorry, there you go. Sorry, the ability to speak to you about this item. Like Councilmember Carter said, the biggest problem is blanket policies. When you institute blanket policies for criminal matters, basically, you hurt public safety. You don't really consider the evidence or the law, and then you do abandon victims of crime, and that, that, that's really the crux of what is going on. For those who don't know me, I'm a deputy district attorney. I've worked for the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office for fifteen years. I primarily handle child abuse, major child murder cases. For the last six years, I have been assigned to the complex child abuse unit in downtown Los Angeles. Before then, I handled child abuse cases, sexual abuse cases, domestic violence, hate crimes, elder abuse cases. One of the big issues with the cities has to do with the misdemeanor policy and, and the ability to provide a good quality of life for your residents and public safety. We're not allowed to charge criminal threats, resisting arrest, disturbing the peace, public drunkenness, solicitation for prostitution, driving on a suspended license, even if you have a prior DUI. So these are dangerous type of crimes that we're not allowed to charge, and it does hurt the quality of life in Laverne. What I mean by that is in a business, if somebody comes to a business and disturbs the peace, and then they call police, and then that person resists arrest, we're not allowed to charge something regarding that, and that does hurt the quality of life in Laverne, and it does hurt public safety, and it's not fair. It's not fair to many individuals involved. I think it needs to be talked about that so many cities have not been able to charge misdemeanors. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department has indicated that over fifty-nine hundred cases have been rejected countywide as a result of George Gascon's policies. That, that is a very, very dangerous thing that is happening. I can tell you in Pomona, it's over twelve hundred, Palmdale's over five hundred, Lancaster's over six hundred, Santa Clarita, where I live, it's over five hundred, Glendale, it's over four hundred, San Dimas, over one hundred. These are cases that you can prove that we're not, that the cities are not allowed to charge because George Gascon is not allowing those police departments to bring the cases to the DA's office and charge them. He's rejecting them. And that really destroys the quality of life in many cities, including Laverne, and it brings down the morale of the police department. What's more important is the fact that, yes, these are, some of these crimes, I think many of them are small crimes, and that we need to be able to give them diversion. But if you can't charge anybody with a crime, we're not allowed to give somebody diversion. What that means is we can't help individuals who are addicted to drugs, individuals who have other issues, because we're not even providing them with diversion because we don't even charge them. In addition to the fact that sometimes when you commit smaller crimes and you're not punished for that, you end up going to bigger and bigger crimes, and it makes the community a place where it's dangerous. Regarding the death penalty, I think there's different, different sides of the aisle regarding that. But what, what Laverne needs to realize is George Gascon also doesn't allow us to charge any life without the possibility of parole charges. So going forward, we're not allowed to charge special circumstances. What that means is if a police officer is murdered in Laverne, we won't be able to charge the special circumstance. If a child's intentionally tortured and murdered in Laverne, we won't be able to charge the special circumstance. If a person is murdered because of a hate crime, because they're a, a member of the Jewish community, because they're African American, because they're a member of the A A P I community, we won't be able to charge that special circumstance on a hate crime. And that means that person won't be able to face life without the possibility of parole. That is not fair to the community, and that is not fair to so many members and individuals of color. It's just not fair, and it's also not following the law. Special circumstances is the law. And what that means is it's a murder that's enhanced with something more egregious than just a murder. We're also not allowed to go to parole hearings on any case, even if the risk assessment was high, meaning if the C D C R, which is the prison system, says that a person, if they're going to be released, they more than likely will commit a crime if they're released. We're still not to go, we're still not allowed to go there and fight for that victim, fight for the survivor, fight for the mother of a murdered child, and stand there and make sure that person doesn't get released. Regarding the juvenile policy, I do believe most juveniles can and should be rehabilitated. However, if you're seventeen and a half years old and you're murdering somebody, or you're raping somebody, those are adult crimes. And we're not allowed to transfer any juveniles up to adult court. And what that means is we can't even present evidence to a judge. That's what would happen, is we would present evidence to a judge, and a judge would make a determination if that juvenile should be transferred to adult court. We're actually not even allowed to do that on any case regarding juveniles. And so all juveniles, no matter what the crime, if you're sixteen or seventeen, you'll be released at twenty-five, even if you're dangerous, even if you haven't been rehabilitated. And I think that causes many problems. We can't charge the gang allegation on any case. We can't charge most firearms allegations on most cases. And just so the, the Laverne realizes, gun crimes and, and shootings are really, have risen. I can tell you from the beginning of George Gascon's tenure in December until June, the statistics are that the homicide rate for L A County Sheriff's is up ninety-five percent. The homicide rate for L A City is up twenty-two percent. The shootings for L A City are up fifty-nine percent. The rapes for L A County are up seven point eight percent. And so his policies are not working. They are not working. I can also tell you with zero bail, there was a study from the San Francisco Chronicle that took into consideration when George Gascon was the DA from twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. And they determined that all these individuals who were released on zero bail, over fifty percent committed new crimes, over eighteen percent committed violent crimes, and fifty-five percent didn't even show up. And so the, the zero bail policy on, on many cases is not working. It's not being effective. And so I, I would ask Laverne to think about all these policies that George Gascon has implemented. It has, it has nothing to do with politics, and I hope, I hope everybody understands this. Murder is not a democratic crime. Rape is not a Republican crime. They're just crimes. I don't ask family members or loved ones when they come in, or my, my detectives, when they come in and file child murder cases, what's, is, is the family a Democrat? Is the family a Republican? Public safety is not a Republican or Democratic crime. And I'm not saying George Gascon is a bad person. I don't really know him as a person. He's never met me. He's never come and talked to me. He's never said anything to me. What I'm saying is his policies that he's implemented are against the law. They don't consider victims. They don't, they don't consider the facts, and they definitely don't consider public safety. Thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions at all, I'll state throughout the whole meeting to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hatami. We really appreciate it. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Hatami before we move to public comment? That would be, if you don't mind holding on, you're okay with that? We have.
Yes, sir.
Like we have, yes.
May I just, I'd like to say before we take public comment that our city manager reached out to Gascon's office to see if he or a representative would come and speak too. So I don't think there was any response. Was there, Mr. Russi?
I did not get any, I got one response back. I sent it to two individuals, said they weren't the appropriate party, but would make sure that the other one was made aware.
I've also heard that communities are the same thing. You know, San Dimas had, they wanted to rearrange and reschedule, so I just, you know.
Mayor, the one thing I do want to introduce, though, is that Councilmember and I, or Councilmember Lau and I, as advisors on the Committee for Cultural Awareness and Social Inclusion, reached out to the chairperson of Cassie, Gilbert Ivy, to see if he could connect with D A Gascon's office. And he did, to engage in conversation with them, and he was successful in reaching them, and, and should council direct Cassie, Cassie would be happy to, to facilitate a conversation for the, for Cassie, for the U L V, for our public safety departments and community. But Mr. Ivy will certainly speak more to that when he comes on.
I thank you. I apologize. I did read that, and I was supposed to queue you up on that, but thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other discussion before we go to public comment? No, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. J R.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we do have a, a number of people wanting to speak on this item as well as some of the others. We also have multiple people signed up via Zoom to, to be an attendee. You can participate by raising your hand. We also have people that have kind of done duplicates where they've made mention that they want us to call them, but have also registered for the Zoom. I would encourage anybody that is as, is attending as an attendee via Zoom, that if you do wish to speak, please use the raise hand function. That will just be much more efficient. If there's those that aren't participating via Zoom, that we do have their phone number, we will give them a call after we get through the, the raise hand folks on Zoom.
I also want to make mention, too, that we are going to keep it to a tight three-minute timeframe. We do have a lot of attendees. And also, if someone previously has already commented, and basically, it's the same, it's the same information that you want to repeat. If I would just say, I agree with my, you know, to keep time in, in, in order for us to move through this, we want to hear everyone, but if it's a repeat, we would appreciate to let other people that have a different view to please speak. So keep that in mind. We will keep tight to the three-minute timeframe, but I do appreciate everyone's comments. And I do appreciate everyone sending in. As Councilman Carter stated, I think I've read every single email that's come in. I apologize if I missed any, but I usually respond to everything, and we read as council, and as Councilman Carter said, we do appreciate your comments. We do appreciate your concerns, and we look at all, all sides of the view. So anyway, go ahead, J R.
Mr. Mayor, I did let Karen Roseberry into the room.
Hello, Karen Roseberry. How are you this evening? You may begin. There you are.
I appreciate it. So I just had to unmute there. So I thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to address the council, and I thank you so much for having taken up this matter of just such a serious concern to Los Angeles County. I, I echo many of the same sentiments that have been brought forth, and I just, I think councils such as yours and in twenty-three other cities that are looking to take bold action to let another elected official know that the actions that are being taken go beyond the scope of his authority. And that's exactly what we're seeing happen with, with the current district attorney. The district attorney's job is to prosecute the offenders with the law as it currently exists. And if there are changes needed to the legislation, that is for the legislators to do. That is for the people to do. And the people have actually spoken very clearly on a number of issues, particularly on bail, in the very same election in which D A Gascon, what was elected. They actually spoke louder and more clearly than even his election. And yet, that voice is being silenced right now by that very one individual who has usurped the authority of the voters when they said that cash bail should be brought back and reinstated. We're seeing misdemeanor crimes significantly impacting the quality of life in numerous communities all throughout Los Angeles County. And I know that in Laverne, it is of the utmost importance, and it's even part of the mission statement to, to ensure that the, the quality of life is indeed preserved and protected. And that is why I think there are so many concerned citizens that are coming forward on this matter, and why there are the issues surrounding these directives that just go very contrary to the protection of quality of life, that go contrary to the preservation of the rule of law and go contrary to the, the job of the district attorney. So for your time and for your efforts and for your willingness to, to address this matter and to serve as a check and a balance upon a, a currently out-of-control elected official who is abusing his power, thank you. upon a, a currently out of control elected official who is abusing his power. Thank you very much. And I do hope that you will take up that vote of no confidence. Thank you, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your
Thank you, Ms. Roseberry. Mr. Salinas, good evening.
Hello. I agree with what the previous person said. George, you, we guys need to vote no confidence in George Gascon. His policies have put more people in danger. We are asking, please join the other twenty-two cities in stance to support the recall of District Attorney George Gasco. Also, just a question for the DA and Jonathan Tommy. How many crimes in Laverne have been submitted for prosecution? And how many of those have been denied? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Mr. Gerard.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, thank you for giving me a moment of your time tonight. Uh, I'm not a resident of Laverne, but I feel like it's very important for me to come out and speak as, to as many of these city councils as I can about this issue. Um, first off, like Mr. Hatami said, this is not a left issue and it's not a right issue. It is a public safety issue. It is a victims' rights issue. Uh, George Gascon centered his election campaign around justice reform. His policies are not reforming the justice system. They are destroying the justice system. Myself and my loved ones have been personally affected by Gascon's policies. On April fifteenth, my girlfriend, Michelle Dorsey, was brutally murdered by her ex-husband. He traveled to Santa Clarita from Washington State with the sole purpose of taking Michelle's life. He broke into her house. He beat her. He stabbed her and he left her for dead while two of his three sons were asleep in that same house. On June twenty-first, when we attended his sentencing hearing, we were told that because of Gascon's policies, Michelle's murderer will be eligible for parole in just twenty years. Michelle's youngest son will not even be thirty years old when the individual who took his mother's life, his own father, will have a chance of being set free. I ask you, where is the justice in that? Gascon has implemented a set of one size fits all policies and in criminal justice, one size does not fit all. I won't sit here and tell you that the justice system is not a flawed system. Justice reform should be a priority. However, the district attorney is voted into office to be the voice of the people, the voice of the victims. And Gascon has made it clear that he believes the criminals are the victims and has hung the actual victims out to dry. He sides with defense attorneys and does not let his own deputy DAs do the job they were hired to do. These DA's hands are tied and they are the ones that have to face the victims when justice is denied. Gascon does not speak to the victims and he will not make himself available for questioning. This is not what the people voted for. The people were misled and misinformed during his campaign. This is why I ask you tonight, I urge you to please vote a passive, passive vote of no confidence and help to get Gascon out of office so that public safety and justice can be restored in Los Angeles County. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gerard. Janita Volkamp, you're, uh, you're on. Good evening.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. I'd like to thank you personally for allowing Jonathan Hatami to speak at this evening's meeting. He brought some very good information in terms of statistics of how many crimes have, uh, not been prosecuted just within each of these cities within the Los Angeles County area. What he may have failed to mention, probably because he was, uh, short on time, was how George Gascon has created a special prosecution, uh, department that are investigating cases that have already been uh, prosecuted, heard cases are closed against law enforcement officers who have, may have been involved in a wrongful death, shooting or death. And so he finds it more important to prosecute law enforcement officers than he does actual criminals with hard evidence. And I find that a serious threat to my safety, to the safety of my family, to the safety of my neighbors and all of the residents within our city. So I'm asking that each one of you vote yes on resolution twenty-one sixty-one for a vote of no confidence in our LA County District Attorney George Gascon. If the people don't put their foot down and say enough is enough, things will continue to get worse. There is a serious domino effect that goes along with these types of policies that he's trying to enforce. And our small city is one of the few safe cities left, but with the adjacent cities around us, like you said, San Dimas has over a hundred cases that were not prosecuted and Pomona has over five hundred and we're right in the middle between those. It could be serious consequences for our residents. So please, I ask each and every one of you to vote yes on resolution twenty-one sixty-one. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Volkamp. Thea Eskey, you are on.
Yes, hi. Mayor, city council members, thank you for having me. My name is Thea Eskey and I'm an investigative reporter currently working on a series of articles about child abuse in Los Angeles County. As a journalist, I have an ethical obligation to pursue the truth. It is that duty that compels me to make a statement here tonight. As with so many others, I don't live in Laverne. I live in Hollywood, which is about forty miles away. But I firmly believe that what affects one of us affects all of us. Indeed, the vote of no confidence that you have before you tonight really asks a simple question. What kind of county do we want to live in? As I mentioned, I have an ethical responsibility to report the truth. The fact is that Los Angeles is in the midst of a child abuse crisis. An audit of the Los Angeles County DCSF showed that from a five-year period from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, two hundred fifty-seven children died from abuse, sixty-nine of whom had some type of DCS supervision in their homes. Also, as a state, we spend twelve point five billion dollars annually to combat child abuse. While it may seem like a tangent to bring this up, it is vitally important that you all understand this because while CPS and the social safety net continues to fail vulnerable and abused children, it's falling more and more on the criminal justice system to pick up that slack. Now, it seems that not even that system can withstand the attacks made by groups of individuals who seek to undermine public safety, justice and accountability for their own ends. Quite simply, council members, George Gascon represents an existential threat to public safety in our county, and I use those words intentionally. The speakers who came before me have eloquently shown their proof of that. I want to add to that chorus. Linking social capital or how citizens relate to and trust the ones who govern them is being eroded daily by the unethical and pro-criminal agenda undertaken by this district attorney and his administration. His actions during his brief tenure demonstrate a clear abrogation of victims' rights in favor of those of the criminal defendant. In researching and listening to victims of crime in Los Angeles, I cannot begin to tell you how many of them feel left behind, alienated from a system that they once found refuge in after facing grave injustice. The way they are feeling should worry all of us. If victims of crime, survivors of crime and their families do not feel that they can trust the criminal justice system to fight to make them whole, I fear for the path that leads our county down. For that reason alone, although you will hear many other equally compelling ones tonight, I strongly urge this council to vote no confidence in District Attorney George Gascon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Jackman. How are you? You are muted.
Hi, I'm doing well. Thank you for having me tonight. Um, I am not representing the Native Unified School District or any board member. And now that we've all heard and been aware of the dangerous decisions that have been made by the LA County DA George Gascon, I'm confident your vote will be in support of the vote of no confidence as any other vote would be in support of crime, criminals and against our law enforcement. Please vote no confidence and, um, you know, the, sorry, um, take into account the safety of our community. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Jackman. Good evening, Ms. Brainerd. You may speak. You may start anytime and you're, there you go. Good evening.
Okay. Uh, good evening. Yeah. Thank you for having, having me here. Uh, just, uh, I have very big concern about this, uh, vote no, uh, competent to, uh, good Gascon. Actually, I come from a country, uh, who have a really, well, really have a lot of crime. I remember I lost at least a five cell phone. Just somebody stole my cell phone, five in three years. So when I moved here, Laverne is my paradise. And I still remember one day, uh, we go, went travel to San Diego, we forgot to lock the door from door for three days. And then Laverne policeman officer called us, hey, something wrong with your daughter, your, your family? Why your doors wide open? We just similarly forgot to lock the door because two kids too loud. Okay? So it would never happen today because that's ten years ago, maybe more than ten years ago. And now we get a warning, we have to lock our car. Okay. Uh, keep our glass door locked. And I, I love garden and I always let my garden, uh, garage door wide open to grow my roses. I'm not going to move anywhere, even my kids, my husband, they all born in, uh, California. And I am going to retire in Laverne. Okay. So when I did all the research about, uh, Gascon, uh, when people talk about Asian hay, actually I didn't really get any discriminated because Asians, but Asian woman get attacked a lot, especially when the supermarket, I just went back, come back from current market just now. Okay, but, but I, I've not really dared to go out by myself and then have good curves and just stop normal, not safe anymore. So that's why I'm so concerned. We have to put safety, put safety above everything. That is so important for our Laverne. It's a very small town. It's a very peaceful for many, many years. I already lived here more than fifteen years and then I come to US nineteen ninety-nine. So to compare the, any communist country, when, whenever, America is the best country. And especially Laverne is the very, very peaceful charming town. So the safety really need to above everything. So I just urge everyone, uh, elect official will present citizen to vote no on, no competent. I mean, vote yes on, okay, no competent. No competent, just Gascon. It's too, it's just like a crime above, above people. Above this is totally wrong. Okay. Thank you for listening and, uh, good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brainerd. Mr. Allison, good evening.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, City Council. Um, I mean, this is going to be tough. There's just so much misinformation flying around, but I'm just going to start with victims' rights. Research shows that past victims prefer resources be devoted to preventing future crime over blanket incarceration policies. Future victims are hoping for leadership that will prevent future crimes. This brings me to the difference between certainty and severity. Certainty is a likelihood of being arrested and convicted. Severity is the amount of time a person will receive if they are arrested and convicted. In our previous and still current system, we have tons of severity, tons of it, but not very much certainty. Research shows that certainty is what determines crime, not severity. I'm going to tell you, most people who actually face special circumstances and enhancements don't actually do the time. That stuff, that time is dealt out in the plea bargaining process. If you have practice in criminal law, then you know that little certainty is there because of resource constraints. I don't think there's a group on the planet that better understands resource constraints than a city council. If this is truly about public safety, then this council should be concerned about where the resources are being allocated and if it's actually increasing certainty or severity, because we can do one, not both. This DA is reallocating resources to prioritize certainty over severity. By taking resources from low level offenses, there are more resources available to devote to certainty in solving higher level crimes. The deputy district attorney talks about the biggest problem here with, uh, Gascon's policies is that misdemeanors are not being prosecuted, yet the only statistics he gave of increases in crime are homicides. Are homicides not being prosecuted? There's no legitimacy here. There's literally no logic in a lot of the arguments that are being made. I practiced criminal law for ten years. Not a single one of my clients have ever gone down for an enhancement or a special circumstance. All of that stuff goes away in the plea bargaining process. Realignment showed us, should have taught us a lesson that either we're going to be ahead of the resource issue or even dire consequences are coming. Remember the mass release of incarcerated individuals without the pre-existing resources to prevent them from going back to crime? That's what we're looking more of if district attorneys don't start getting out in front of the California electorate. I would advise all district attorneys do what police do when they know a civilian oversight committee is coming. They write the rules. This DA is getting ahead of the reforms and is actually writing the rules. There's no legitimacy in the argument that we are less safe. There's no statistics, no connection being drawn. And so I'm asking this council to actually follow the facts, table this motion, get, create a commission, do the hard work and get the research, gather the facts and tell us the truth. This is political. It's a lie to call it anything else.
Allison, your time is up, but thank you very much for your time. Ms. Holt, you are on. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for, um, giving us an opportunity to speak. Um, thank you for your time. Thank you for bringing on Mr. Jonathan. He was very informative. Um, and I just, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. So I just want to vote, uh, no confidence on Gascon. I think, um, just a little bit about what the last gentleman said. Thank you for his opinion. Um, you know, he's been in San Francisco for a long time, so I feel like his actions in San Francisco speak very loudly. I don't want LA to turn into San Francisco. And, um, I feel another thing is like what he said, Mr. Jonathan about policemen, like, why would anyone want to be a policeman in this time if they're not gonna, the fruit of their labor is not going to be seen if they're not being punished, the criminals aren't being punished? Like, why would you want to be a policeman? Like, your work would be in vain. Like you're going after the bad guys, but here comes this DA and just lets them go. Like, I don't understand. I have a very good childhood friend that I've known since I was seven. He's a sergeant for, um, LAPD. He works Skid Row. And he's just like my more, the morale in my department is horrible. Like no one wants to answer calls because this guy doesn't prosecute anyone. So he's like, it's horrible. Like I can't motivate them to go out there and answer calls. So I'm very concerned. I'm very concerned because, um, yeah, like who would want to be a policeman in this age? I have no idea. Grateful for the Laverne Police Department. Thank you for all you do, for all the police department. Um, he talked about facts, but I feel like San Francisco, I don't know. That's my example. Those are the facts. I don't want LA to turn to San Francisco. I'd love to stay in Laverne, um, but I am considering moving out of state because you know, the safety issue is a big issue, especially if I want to have kids, which I plan to do soon. So, um, yeah, just agreeing with the other people who want to vote no, no confidence in Gascon. Thank you very much for your time. Have a great evening.
Good evening, Mr. Ivy. You may start. You are muted. Yours.
Good mor- good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm still.
Actually, you're, there you go. You're good. Right there. I think. I can't hear you. There. It's playing tricks on us. It shows you're muted and then you're talking, so I'm not sure. We cannot hear you, Mr. Ivy, if you are talking.
How about now?
Yes, sir. We can hear you. Perfect.
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about this. The telephone, not me. So I wanted to say good evening to everybody. Thank you for all your comments and I do want to what council member Muir mentioned earlier, with Gascon's office and his chief of staff and his office, and he is willing, uh, to come out and communicate with And he is willing to come out and communicate with Cassie because he's looked into Cassie, finds that it's along the lines of the kinds of things he's trying to accomplish as far as just bringing more communication to the area. So I serve as communication arm for the city council if requested. And we can make to make together communications and meetings together with the district attorney's office so we can get to the full facts that are under consideration at the council meeting today. I think it would be a wonderful idea if we can take advantage of open communication that Cassie provides and and welcome the residents to those meetings when we can schedule it with the district attorney Gascón. So thank you for your opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ivy.
And sorry for the delay. Just on the other end, for those of you that do have your hand raised, you do have to allow yourself to be brought into the room once I try to promote you.
Mr. Cartwright, good evening. You are muted. No, you're not. There you are. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name's Oliver Cartwright, and I'm a resident of Laverne, a concerned parent. I'm a founder of Clean Parks Laverne, community watch leader, street team activist for children's safety with Megan's Law, a small business owner and a farmer. I speak today to ask the city of Laverne to vote no confidence on Gascón. I believe that the safety of our children and community depend on it. We must support our law enforcement officers and keep the children safe and follow the law. That's all. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you, Mr. Cartwright, and thank you for what you do for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You too, Mayor.
Ms. Gabbaldon, good evening.
Hello there, everybody. Let me flip this on also. Well, I'm sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor, and everybody for having us on tonight. And also, thank you for having Mr. DA Tommy on. I would like for him to have a chance to actually respond to some of the comments that were made by a few of the other speakers. A few other things I wanna point out. I'm actually running the Gascón Signature Campaign here in town. And to date, we've had over a thousand signatures from people, people from Laverne. I would have to say that the people of Laverne want to have no on Gascón. The people of Laverne are not this Cassie group. I I just went really quickly and looked at Cassie. It's a very small group. It does not seem to be including all people from town, actually, those of us who would actually have concerns. And to think that DA, DA Gascón's people would come to that, but they wouldn't come to the city of San Dimas meeting and they're not here today, right there tells me that is just nothing but partisan politics. That is not okay. This is about safety. This is about that family just down here on Blossom Lane this weekend. The man who tried to kill his wife and maybe even hurt his own child, how do we know if he's even gonna be getting thrown in jail? Because he, even though he had a laundry list of things thrown against him this weekend, he could be out on the street in two months, one month as far as we know. In fact, if those are just misdemeanors, he won't even get tried. Do you guys know that that happened on Saturday? That's happened Saturday here in town. What about the man who killed the woman over there at the park in San Dimas? I've been trying for a month to find out what happened to him. And from everything I've heard, he still doesn't have charges pressed against him by Gascón. What about them? This isn't anything more than being one hundred, one hundred percent about the safety of the people. Seventy-six thousand prisoners are gonna be let out, let out of prisons here in California in the next three months. Where are all those people gonna go? Where are they gonna go? Where are they gonna get money? What about the woman who came into my garage two months ago and my son was in my garage? And thank goodness, he's a big kid. But when wandering in there, because she's homeless, and then started going door to door all the way down and tried to break in into the Mormon church on our street and also tried to break into three other people's cars? Where, when are we protected? This isn't fantasy land anymore. This is reality. It's on our doorstep. Men's Central Jail is getting shut down. I see the yellow. You have my email today? Please, please vote yes on the no confidence against Gascón. You have at least a thousand people here in town who want that. Thank you.
Ms. Gabbaldon. Good evening, Mr. Bowen. You are muted. You're still muted. There you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to support everyone who spoke about the no confidence vote. This should be one of the easiest things this council has ever done. Twenty-three other cities. And I do find it interesting, and for the record, I'm also a member of Cassie. I'm also a founder of LV3C. We recently had a meeting that had a police representative come to talk to us and tell us all of the issues regarding the current DA. Now, he's letting people out of jail. He's not prosecuting really serious crimes. We we talked that these are like shoplifting. They are not. They are serious crimes. I wanna mirror Cynthia a moment ago saying, I find it interesting that the DA's office at the last minute, two hours prior to the San Dimas meeting, said they wouldn't show up. And tonight, if I, if I heard right, I heard the city manager say he had reached out to Gascón's office and that they did not, that he talked to some lower level person and the DA's office did not respond. Yet, as she mentioned, they communicate with Cassie? What? It's, that's incredible. And I will address that in the next Cassie meeting. But I find it very, very interesting that the DA's office will not respond to a city's request, knowing this is on the agenda, but they will talk to a committee within that city just because they have similar views. So if anybody thinks this is not political, sorry, you're absolutely wrong. And God forbid this man continues what he's doing to Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Good evening, Ms. Wakeley. You are muted. We're.
Good evening, Mayor Hepburn and the City Council. I want to urge you to vote to no contest for George Gascón. He, from the moment he took office, he has disregarded the victims' rights and the rights of their families and has nothing but sympathy for the perpetrators of these crimes. And I'm a longtime resident here in Laverne. I've lived here for thirty-two years. And I just really agree with all the people who are urging you to vote to for no contest. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wakeley. Good evening, Ms. Allison. You are muted. There you go. Hello, babies.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for taking my comments. I love that this discussion is happening because dialogue is good and meaningful education and engagement is even better. And I am a resident of Laverne that is calling to say that I am here for more engagement and education and not a quick rash decision to vote no confidence. I am personally offended by a previous caller saying that Cassie attendees or those of us that are calling urging our council not to vote no confidence are not the real members of the community. I am a real member of the community and I would urge my council to, instead of voting no confidence, take the opportunities that present themselves, like engaging through Cassie, which is an open invitation. So if the previous callers would like to engage in that conversation, they should. On the issue of this being partisan, I agree. The no vote movement started even before he officially took office. So I'm concerned that the partisanship exists on that side of the dialogue as well. I have concerns about safety. I go to parks with my children frequently and I like feeling safe doing so. I also have concerns about public safety rhetoric being conflated with meaningful criminal justice reform. The issues that have been brought about murderers that are being left loose or or domestic violence offenders never even being charged, that's not even listed as part of the reform. Those are violent criminals and those do get dealt with in our criminal justice system. But I want to hear more detail about what the reforms' actual impact are in our communities. And I would like that dialogue to be open to hear from, from not just the perspective that your family member may end up being a victim, but also the perspective that your family member and loved ones may end up being a quality of life criminal that gets caught trespassing, that gets caught, caught petty crime lifting. It might be a juvenile that needs a diversion program, which is a big part of these reforms. So I want to give the opportunity for not just myself, but all the members of the Laverne community to really dig into the nitty gritty of not just what these reforms are, but what the actual implications are, possibly good and possibly bad. That cannot be done when we jump on a no vote, a no confidence vote train that started the second he got elected. Please table this vote. Look into the ways that our community can better engage in diversion programs, in criminal justice reform, and in bettering this community for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. I see no hands raised. JR.
Mr. Mayor, also do not see any further hands raised, but we do have some callers. The first caller that I have on the line is Loretta Verdugo. Go ahead, Loretta.
Hello, I'm Loretta Verdugo, yes, and I'm asking you, the Laverne City Council, to please vote a no confidence vote against George Gascón. My sister, Robin Shirley, and her coworker, Lee Thompson, were murdered here in Laverne at the Target store, October 2nd, nineteen ninety-three. Sergio Nelson didn't just shoot them. He painted his bike black and waited in the early morning and ambushed them. He shot Lee four times in the back. He also shot my sister, but when she made a gurgling sound, he went back and put the barrel against her head, point blank, and blew her brain all over that car, knowing she had little children aged six and ten. In two thousand sixteen, the Supreme Court overturned the death penalty for retrial. For five years, we had prepared for retrial. Then December 7th, twenty twenty, the day that will live with me forever, our new DA Gascón put out his unlawful and dangerous directive. There was to be no retrial because Gascón doesn't believe in the death penalty, even though we voted for it. My family and I wanted to meet with Gascón. On December 18th, twenty twenty, I wanted to voice my concerns to Gascón at the Pomona courthouse where he was speaking outside. Another murder victim's mother and myself were protesting and shouting when DA Gascón accused us, but mainly myself, of quote, "not having enough education to keep their mouth shut," unquote. After this fiasco, DA Gascón promised to reach out to us, which he never did. Even with our Marcy's Law attorney Kathy Katie and former LA District Attorney Stephen Cooley, we could not get a meeting. Gascón caters to the criminals. He has in fact met with criminals in the Department of Justice over victim's families. In March, after an unsuccessful attempt to meet with Gascón, we found out that the DA had already made a signed deal with the double murder before letting victim's families know. My sister, Robin Shirley, and Lee Thompson deserve justice. Gascón's directives are illegal and dangerous to our communities and our counties. Crime is rising. As of now, a trespasser in your own home does not get arrested. You only get the ticket and a path to do it again. Dislike solicitation, petty theft, drug possession, a felon with a gun, no arrest, only tickets. Juvenile who murdered will be free when they turn twenty-five. Gang violence is quickly rising. Here, Pomona had two murders the last seventy-two hours, right down the street, Gary and Earl, very close to Laverne. But no gang enhancement. Please vote no confidence in George Gascón. Our county deserves to be safe. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have Terry Prentice on the line.
Mr. Prentice, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council and Mr. Rusty. Last night, this district attorney first hand shown represents itself as a transparent fighter of reform of the criminal justice system. But that's not what its total history shows. He was appointed by Gavin Newsom, the chief of police of San Francisco, where he tried to hide the scandal within the police crime lab. It came to light following the trial in which two defendants in a murder case were acquitted due improper handling, testing, and reporting to VNA evidence. An investigator for the DA's office and one of the attorneys who represented the two murder suspects both wrote detailed letters to Gascón to explain the crime lab's efficiency. Gascón refused to reveal the letters to the laboratory accreditation board and to a defense, and to defense attorneys as required by ethics laws, claiming the city attorney had considered this information a work product. The city attorney denied making that claim. Does Charles Haynes order this information to be released? And order that Gascón refuse, appeals, and appeals court ruled against him denounce him. Gascón was appointed district attorney of San Francisco by Newsom to fill the unexpired term for Kamala Harris as the vice California Attorney General. When running for reelection as DA of San Francisco, he reversed his long-term stance and argued against the death penalty and sentenced him to answer for violent criminals and used a firearm in crime. He claimed to be an advocate for the need of police reform, even though he has not instituted any for the chief of police of San Francisco, for Mesa, Arizona, for his assistant chief of LAPD, and his resistance reforms as evidenced by his malfeasance in the handling of the crime lab scandal. During his second term as DA of San Francisco, he refused to prosecute his theft, other misdemeanor crimes, and some felonies was resolved in a thirty-seven percent increase in property crimes in just one year. Gascón's legacy in San Francisco is resulted in this one beautiful, one beautiful destination city now having the third highest violent crime rate and the highest property crime rate in the state. Walgreens closed seventeen stores in San Francisco, but along with Target, reduced hours of operation of the stores due to soaring crime that threatens their employees. When he could not get the support of other city officials for his reelection as DA, he resigned, stayed his roots in Los Angeles to care for his mother. One month later, he filed for the DA's district attorney's commission, being supported by a donation of more than two million dollars from a George Soros political organization. The San Francisco city officials, including Mayor Breach, all endorsed Jack Lacy, stating Gascón has been bad for San Francisco and would be bad for LA, a fact that has been borne out by the already dramatic increases in all levels of crimes in LA County that serial criminals have been entered and given they get out of jail free cards by Gascón due to lack of prosecution. I heard a no confidence voted in George Gascón. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prentice. Thank you, Mr. Prentice. Mr. Gabbaldon, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, I'm quite frankly, uh, a little concerned at the tone of the the uh dialogue this evening on behalf of the citizens. Um, I'm quite frankly appalled that some ideologues would put safety uh behind their political preferences and uh, you know, what they would deem misinformation. Uh, any monkey can go and find the information for themselves, and I caution the city council that any vote other than no confidence puts any potential safety issues forward forward uh on their shoulders. And to the comment by one of the uh persons this evening uh that mentioned we should get facts over uh uh just the misinformation, uh as they say, uh liars figure and figures lie. So I took the time to go to the uh Los Angeles County Registrar and would provide these facts for the council to think about their vote tonight. Um, in the 2020 election, the one just passed, uh per the Los Angeles County Registrar, 9,000 votes were cast in the city of Laverne, the citizens of Laverne, as to their their choice of who should be district attorney. In that vote, and in the order of their preference, Jackie Lacy received 65% of the vote. Rachel Rossi, a challenger, received 19.5% of the vote, and George Gascon only received 15.5% of the vote. If we're if we're talking about numbers, I think it is very clear how the vast majority of Laverne citizens and voters would make their decision tonight if they were given the opportunity to make this decision for you. Please vote no confidence on this item. Thank you.
Mayor, I have Callie Gregory on the line.
Oh, great, Mr. Gregor, is it Mr. or Mr.? I didn't get the first name, Holly. Ms. Gregory.
Callie Gregory, hello, how are you?
Oh, sorry.
Um, so I did call in at the last meeting, but there's some others that I wanted to talk about. Um, we are seeing a rise in crime and the criminal community has gotten the message that there is no consequence for theft, for example, and so they figure, you know, why not steal? Um, there's not going to be any consequences. Um, and there are victims right here in Laverne. So if you're thinking this is just something that's happening in other places, there's a woman I spoke to who lives right around the corner from you, Mr. Pepper, and um she had to go to court by herself to a parole hearing without the support of prosecutor um by her side and, you know, having to face the intimidation of that court process while the criminal was given the support of a public defender. Um, we voted for the three strikes law, and since Gascon has gotten into office, he issued a directive to uh the deputy district attorney to not enforce the three strikes law. There's a whole list of laws that he directed his deputy uh district attorneys not to enforce. And um so essentially, he's thinking that even though we, the people, voted for certain laws, he can just override them and overrule the will of the people, and that's not what he's in office to do. He's supposed to be in office to enforce the law, not ignore them. Thank you. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Ms. Berry, good evening.
Good evening. Um, I appreciate the time to call. I just wanted to uh just keep it brief. I know you've been hearing a lot of uh figures and a lot of uh information regarding Gascon. As we've learned in the last year, what goes on in the county really does affect Laverne. We're not a little island. We can't just, you know, have everything um moving easy. Things have changed in the last year, but um I I just really feel like safety is so important, and we have one of the best police forces around, but if things at the county level or the state level or whatever level are affecting their ability to uphold and enforce the law and protect and serve, we are all at risk. And the things that have gone on just since Gascon's taken office, um it's just, it's not something that we can just like, well, let's write some letters or let's just look at, think about it or discuss it. We got to take a stand, and I need the council to vote no confidence and make a statement along with all the other cities that have. I would actually be embarrassed if Laverne doesn't. I really would. Um, we need our council to stand for the safety of the residents, the law-abiding citizens, and the police force who are here to serve us. So I'm just very strongly um am asking that you all vote uh for no confidence on Gascon and send that strong message for us, the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Mayor, there's one person that didn't answer, so I'm going to try to bring them uh try try them again, so please bear with me. Sorry, sir, not able to reach. Um, I left the voicemail earlier and uh just got a message that the voicemail box is full, so the person must not be available.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go ahead and close uh public comment and move back to council comments. Um, do we have any uh questions for Mr. Hatami? Is Mr. Hatami still with us, JR?
Yes, he is. He's he's an attendee. If you'd like me to bring him in, I can. Uh, just give me that direction.
I think the one question that the resident had was how many cases in in Laverne? I know he was going from um LA County sheriffs is what his stats were from, so that's why he did San Dimas. But I know um I received information that prior to um the new district attorney taking office, the rejection rate for Laverne was was 12%. After uh uh the district attorney took office and issued a new directive, the rejection rate went up to 40%.
You got you. You kind of, you're kind of going out there, Mr. Cosby.
But I didn't know that's for.
We're we're losing you.
So Rick, is your question to Jonathan? What is the rate? Is that what we're trying to hear from you?
My, that was the resident's question. I stated uh uh what the rate was was given to us prior. The rate was given to us prior was the rejection rate prior was 12%, but since the new issues were, it went up to 40%. So that would be the answer to that question from the the resident.
Is that something you can speak on, Mr. Hatami?
I can't speak on specifically Laverne. I can tell you, though, that um from after talking with other um uh city councils, I know Palmdale was 18% and then after George Gascon, it went up to 59%. I do know Pomona, it's over 1,200 rejects due to George Gascon's policies. Palmdale is over 500, Lancaster over 600, Santa Clarita Valley over 500, Glendale over 400, um San Dimas over 100. Um, I know Walnut, I believe, had six, uh and I know a total of all the areas covered by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department was 5932, uh that were totally rejected as a result of George Gascon's policies.
Do you have the previous, Mr. Hatami?
I don't. For those, the only only to have the previous is the one that Mr. Cosby just said, uh and then the one that Palmdale gave us, which was 18% and then now it's 59%.
Okay, so measurable, let's just say.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay.
And those were all misdemeanors, right? No rejects of felonies?
So there there are rejects of felonies, but tho- those ones are just misdemeanors, but there are rejects of felonies as well. I don't believe that we've accumulated all the statistics regarding the felonies uh at this time, but I know misdemeanors. The only thing I can tell you about felonies, just so uh the council is aware and it was something that was brought up, um I I definitely can tell you that um there's been numerous cases, uh specifically, I can tell you of three children who were murdered in Reseda uh by a mom, another three children who were murdered in East LA by a mom, uh and Michelle, Michelle's case that was talked to you, Dorsey. All three of those cases, George Gascon didn't charge the special circumstance. So any new case going forward, um there is no special circumstance charged in those cases. Uh, I can only to also tell you in juvenile cases, uh there was uh an individual who was 17 years and 11 months and he killed two girls, uh and he's going to get out when he's 25. There was an individual in uh Reseda uh who killed a teenager in a basketball court at the high school. He's going to get out when he's 25. There was another individual who killed a teenager on a bicycle in Antelope Valley. Uh, he's going to get out when he's 25. So there are measurable um specific cases uh that we know of um that these policies have affected. So when people say that there aren't measurable um stats, there is. There's measurable stats for misdemeanors, uh there's measurable specific cases for felonies.
You're muted.
Thank you. Um, so here is my question, because I am, you know, obviously, as as the other council members have been doing, reading, um, you know, emails, uh fielding phone calls, talking to, you know, various people, because um I think this is a very important issue that that has a lot of layers um that we need to look at. So what I would like to know from you, and and you may or may not have this answer, is that um what I'm looking, and so just to be forthcoming, what I'm looking for is a solution to the problems that have been raised, not just the um increase in crime and how do you prosecute those people that um, you know, may have, that have transgressed, but also how do we create a situation where there is opportunity for diversion rehabilitation? Do I believe that everybody can be rehabbed? No. But do I believe that we are missing the the mark in terms of trying to rehab the people that can be rehabbed? Yes. And so my question is, does a vote of no confidence on Gascon in this present moment draw us any closer to that solution? Because I will say that if there is an opportunity for us to engage in dialogue and try to formulate and change people's minds about what the policies may be or what can or can't be done, I think that will lead to a more, so, you know, uh re- a resolution to the issue at hand, which is the concern of safety for everybody, but also the concern for society as a whole in terms of how do we make society as a whole better? And right now, I'm not convinced that the vote of no confidence in this moment brings us closer to that resolution that we're all seeking, which is, like I said, safety, rights for the victims, and ability to rehabilitate those that can be rehabilitated. And I get that that's a, you know, that there's many layers to that. There's a lot of um resources and work that would have to be done, um but I think that's part of the problem that we see a lot of times is that um we Band-Aid things or we say, you know, hey, we're gonna, if we do this, great. But does that lead us to the ultimate result? And that's what I'm interested in. And just, you know, I'm going to say this so that everybody is real clear on it as well. Um, for me, this is not about politics. This is about safety. This is about how do we make a better society for all of us? And so, you know, I don't want you to, people to think that, you know, I live in some, you know, fantasy land where I've never had crime committed, for those of you that may or may not know. But my parents had their house robbed in February, probably by folks that um have been doing it all up and down the the 10 freeway. Um, I've been a victim of domestic violence. I have been a victim of, you know, uh robbery. And so, does that piss me off? Yeah, it does. But I also think that if we are going to make a better society, we do need to put resources and put our heads together to think about how do we change things? And that may mean, you know, opportunity and access to education early on so that there are viable options, right? It has to mean that there is money put into programs that can rehabilitate those that can be rehabilitated, and it means putting money towards keeping those behind bars who cannot and will not ever be rehabilitated. Um, and again, this is the question that I posed to you, you know, how do you see this vote of no confidence effectuating those aims in this moment? Because I think that a vote of no confidence takes you down a road, um but that road is long and that will not necessarily effectuate the the resolutions that we're seeking.
I think those are great comments and questions, and I'm going to let you know I agree with most of them. Um, first off, I am a victim of child abuse. I'm at it, I've had a tough road, um, a lot of ups and downs. I've made a lot of mistakes, especially as as a teenager. Um, and I think most individuals can be rehabilitated and should be. Um, I think that people do make mistakes, and if we want to have a better society and a better community, we have to learn ways on how to help individuals so they are better and so they can become productive members in our society. I do agree with you that we should put the majority of the money into education, uh into education when you're younger. Um, you know, once you're murdering individuals, there's not much I can do for you, um but I can definitely help children uh and young people through education, um through nutrition uh that you need to get food as children, through through mentorship, through the fact that you need computers, you need a place to study, you need a place to feel safe. Um, all those things are incredibly, incredibly important, um how to be better parents for our kids. Um, I am going to tell you this, here's the thing about rehabilitation, and and this is an easy one with misdemeanors. You you can't have diversion if you don't have a charge. George Gascon actually wants to release individuals. That's all he cares about. If he really wanted to to help individuals, what he would do is you charge misdemeanors, you offer diversion, you give them programs for drug rehabilitation, for in for for all sorts of different things, mental health, and you hope that they get better, and you do everything in your power to help them get better. But there always has to be a hook. You always have to have a hook that says, if you don't do this program, if you don't succeed, yeah, the potential is you could go to jail, and that helps a lot of individuals. I know a lot of people addicted to drugs. I know a lot of deputies are addicted to drugs, pain medication. They can't be around their peer group and they need to be forced into a program, and then they can get better. If you just want to release individuals, all you care about, then then it's going to cause a dangerous situation in our community. When one of those callers said that juveniles who trespass should be given diversion, I believe juveniles who trespass shouldn't even be in the juvenile justice system. They should go to teen court. Uh, I worked in juvenile court for over a year and a half. George Gascon has never worked in juvenile court or any court his entire career, and children who are just trespassing, yeah, they shouldn't be in the juvenile justice system. That's not going to be good for them. They should go to teen court, but George Gascon doesn't know anything about that because he's never done it. And so I'm not talking about juveniles who get in fights or joyride or steal something because some of those things I've done. I I'm talking about juveniles who are killing people or who are raping people. Those individuals, that's adult crimes. And so the problem with George Gascon is he doesn't care about what you're saying. He doesn't want to help the community, because if he did, he wouldn't have blanket policies. Helping the community means hard work. It means looking at each individual case and giving each individual case that care. That's not only the care for the victim, that's the care for the defendant and the care for the community. So I'm going to tell you this, George Gascon doesn't care, because if he cared, he'd be here. He believes he's too high and too important to come down to a city council to talk to all of you. He wants to do it through his own uh individuals who are helping him. He wants to do it through his own uh individuals who are helping him, and he wants all of you to go to a, a, a meeting in secret. That lacks transparency. And anybody who's good, a good elected official knows that transparency is the most important. And we should all sit there in front of everybody and talk about how to make our community better. And so as a prosecutor, especially as a child abuse prosecutor, especially as somebody who's been a victim of child abuse, I try to understand all aspects of my cases. And many of my cases, we do give probation. I do see individuals who made mistakes. I do see individuals who have alcohol issues or have anger issues. But there's a big difference between someone accepting responsibility and a small mistake versus somebody intentionally murdering and torturing a child. And if George Gascon thinks that a child who's intentionally murdered and tortured, that person should, should be released at some point on parole, him and I are just gonna disagree, because he doesn't care about my children or your children or the community. And so I just don't think that he, he really cares. And I, so I think the best solution is telling him as a community, you have no confidence in his policies and he needs to change and get better.
Yes, and Jonathan also, um, I heard you say earlier, and I'd like you to explain a little more because I also heard you talk about this at the San Dimas meeting, is you are an employee, you're a deputy district attorney. He is your boss. Gascon is your boss, and he has never even come to meet you. Is that correct?
That is correct. You know, I mean, first, it's a little scary to do what I'm doing, but um I believe it's the right thing to do. Second, I believe that you're a leader, because I was in the military. And so I believe if you're a leader, you should lead by example. I also believe if you're a leader, you should tell everybody what, what's your policies, what's your vision? And he should come down and meet all the deputy district attorneys, all of us who have a lot more experience than he does, because he's never even tried one case. And just say, hey, this is my vision. This is what I wanna get accomplished. What do you think about it? How can we, how can we move this vision into reality? How can we help the community, also provide resources for victims, also make sure there's public safety? He just doesn't wanna do that. He just doesn't.
Yes, and along with uh my comment to go along with that is I agree with Jonathan. We invited him to this meeting. San Dimas invited them to the meeting. San Dimas had a wonderful meeting. Even Mr. Bowen talked about what a great meeting it was. So it made me sit down and watch the meeting. They invited him. Two hours before the meeting, they had uh somebody calling cancel, two hours. So it's great to think now they're stalling by asking if they can meet with Cassie and that for us to hold off on our vote. I say we go ahead and take our vote tonight. But then also, it's still invite them out, see if they come out and meet with Cassie. But that is a small group. We wanted the whole community have a chance on Zoom to listen to them.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Davis.
Um, I don't have any questions for Mr. Otomi. Thank you.
Mr. Crosby.
I have no more questions.
I really appreciate it, Mr. Otomi. I just, you know, this, this has been coming for some time, and then when Jackie Lacy was voted out, I mean, AB one oh nine, Prop forty seven and Prop fifty seven, it weakened the, it weakened the, the system uh tremendously for our police officers and for also for you uh in the uh legal aspect of the city and a- as Councilmember Carter had said, um if you're invited, you should come. You have nothing to hide and transparency is extremely important. And uh as a number of our residents have pointed out, that uh Mr. Gascon was not really represented in our community very well, uh you know. Uh, sixty-five percent of the voters were for uh to, you know, have Jackie Lacy uh repeat um her job. And um, you know, my, my biggest problem is the fact that um it's making it so the criminals have more rights than the ones that are criminalized. And I, I can't handle that. I'm sorry, I just can't, I can't put up with that. Uh, and I do believe, as Councilmember Carter said, that I do believe that uh our Cassie group is a great group, and it's a good group for discussion. I think we have to have that discussion, but uh I think as our sister cities is uh was it twenty-seven cities have already voted in no confidence or somewhere close to that? Twenty-three? I think it's, I think it's actually, yeah, it's more now, but um I think a- as we found out in the COVID realm and the last year and a half, that uh the frustration levels on us, especially with being shut down, when, you know, two of our supervisors said, no, restaurants are not a problem, but they went ahead, the other three decided to go ahead and shut them down. And when we wanted to keep those open, so you, you look at, and, and this really comes down to what you, the last comment you made. As a whole, we have a voice. There's eighty-eight cities in Los Angeles County. And if enough of us say, no, we want fair representation for the people that are being criminalized and have a fair playground. And I do believe in, in uh, you know, in schooling and classes and lessons. And I believe in, in uh rehabilitation, but it has to be on the right, on the right court, you know, you just it, it has to be done correctly. And a criminal in a death or a murder case, you know, we have to protect ourselves and we have to have a, a district attorney that's, that's able to protect us. And to also give the tools to the people that work underneath him, our police departments, our district attorneys, to give them the tools to properly defend those people that have been criminalized against. So uh, I do thank you for your time. I really do appreciate it. Uh, and I know this is uh from someone that, 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 that sometimes goes out on a limb. I do understand that it's a, a tough position. I appreciate your candor. I appreciate you opening up of your situation. Uh, you know, experience in life is the experiences you face and then listen to other people to help them make better choices. And I do appreciate that. And thank you for coming to our council tonight. Any other questions for Mr. Otomi before we let him go? Thank you, Mr. Otomi. We do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to council.
Okay, well, I don't know. Does anyone have any more comments or otherwise? I'd like to make motion.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I have a few comments to, that I'd like to make. Um I think we, we had some dialogue tonight. I think unfortunately, it was very polarized, the conversation that we had. And we didn't work, I think, as, as, as much as I'd hoped to come to a solution that can, can move things. Because I do believe that a vote of no confidence by our council through this resolution would do nothing other than politically standing on something and saying, see, we did something which has no impact whatsoever. I think our residents, as every voter in Los Angeles County has the right to request a recall and should sufficient number of voters get their um sign the uh measure, a recall would happen. But there is no space for a city council to, to move the needle on that. So, so a vote of no confidence simply plays a political maneuver and does not do anything, I believe, to move our city forward. Um, people are talking about um what Gascon uh uh ran on and what he has done. And he's been fairly consistent, I must say. Um, Proposition forty-seven, fifty-seven, where people were being let out of prisons um was all pre-Gascón. Um, so, so people who we thought had special circumstances or we thought had enhancements were being released from jail just because our jails are overcrowded. Um, uh, Ms. Cabaldin had talked about the LA City Jail being closed. That was done by the LA County Supervisors, not by DA Gascon, as she, I think she rightfully said. But that was due to overcrowding and an unfit um uh uh facility because we have too long, I think, tried to incarcerate our way out of this dilemma. And I don't think that's getting us anywhere. I, I don't necessarily agree with everything Gascon's doing, but I do believe that the path forward to cause meaningful change, because it is about public safety. It's about our community being safe is engaging with Gas, uh DA Gascon in his office and trying to figure out and understand what they're doing and where we can help to shape and change things to, to the betterment of our community. I don't believe that um Gascon's office will be interested in talking to Cassie or anybody else if our, if our city council stands up and says, we as a council vote no confidence, because I believe that Gascon will just, just commit, just acknowledge that there's another community that doesn't wanna listen to me, that doesn't wanna work with me. They just want to, to stand on whatever it is they're standing on, because a this resolution is meaningless.
Mayor, I have to ask you, don't you wonder why he wouldn't come to the meeting and speak to the whole comm- city? Knowing we're on Zoom, they wouldn't send a representative, but yet they're willing to meet with a small group of, what, what do you have, less than ten? Very disheartening.
It's, it's not a small group. The, uh, I mean, the group is small, but the invitation goes broad. And no, I don't believe, I, I don't believe that if, that a city council meeting where we're conducting city business is the place to have this kind of dialogue. I really don't. City council meetings aren't places of education, aren't places of, of communication and sharing new ideas. City council meetings are where we conduct city business.
Councilmember Law.
I, you know, I, I go back to my comment before I've asked this question of, you know, a number of people. Um, how does a vote of no confidence get us to the resolution that we want? And I understand, because I've talked to Chief Paz, I've talked to, you know, um Officer Gutierrez and, and, you know, and I, I get that there have been um some communications that have happened and maybe some that, you know, have been refused. And you know, Robin, to your point, do, do I feel like that's a little bit, you know, would it have been nice if you would have come on? Yes, sure, that, that might have been nice. But at the same token, if there is an opportunity for us to engage, I compare this to some of the other committees that many of us sit on. Whether it's, you know, the San Gabriel um Council of City, you know, the, the cities where representatives from city council that go and engage with the different representatives, whether it's the county supervisor, other city representatives to identify and work towards a solution or resolution. I think this is similar in the sense that if they will meet, or if he will meet with Cassie, and we have an opportunity to try to change his mind about some of these policies, or I get a better understanding of how we can accomplish all these goals that I think we all want, right? Uh, how do we prevent crime? Whether that's through a rehabilitation or diversion program, whether that's through uh identifying resources to promote that, whether it's putting resources i- in the necessary pockets when people can't be rehabilitated, when there are serious crimes that are committed. I have to think that we have to be able to work with each other to make it happen. And maybe this is the the dreamer in me, maybe this is the, the me being an optimist about it. But I believe that we need to learn to walk and talk with other people to get to a resolution. And I just, you know, if a vote of no confidence was going to immediately somehow change out the DA to somebody that would be um, you know, more amenable to coming to meetings or to having these discussions or, or whatever it might be. Maybe that might change my mind, but I know the reality of all that's gonna do to Councilmember um Davis's point is that once the vote is done, we shut off our ability to communicate. And I would like for us to be the council, to be the city, to be the place where we dig deep and we work hard to get to a solution, because we are not all going to agree. But we all have to live together. So we need to figure out, how can we talk past our differences? How can we get to a solution? How can we get everyone heard? And I'm not saying that this is, you know, um one or, you know, the every, that one side's perfect and the other's not. We all have a place in this. We all have a role to play. And, you know, at the end of the day, Gascon doesn't play ball. You know, to, again, you know, there's nothing to stop our voters and our constituents. There's nothing to stop this council to revisit this conversation at a later date, if, if it's not, if we don't get what we need or what we think is uh necessary for our community. But I'd like to at least try to find a solution so that we can actually get to a safer community versus cutting that off at the knees now. So, um, you know, I, I get it. You know, I, I get the emotions on, on all sides, because like I said, I I have family that's in law enforcement. I've talked to folks that are in law enforcement. I've been a victim. I've talked to victims. And so at the end of the day, we still, like I said, we all have to figure out a way to live together, and we've gotta find a way to make our communities better. And I don't think that happens when we decide that we don't wanna talk to the people that we disagree with.
Councilmember Crosby, you've been quiet a little. Would you like to speak on this item?
My, my, my point of view on this is that uh as I, I feel no confidence vote would uh do little or nothing to the overall aspect of this. I do believe that um with rejection from twelve percent up to forty percent uh um that I, I believe in, in casting that vote. I believe that um it would be able to, to make sure that we stand with, with our, ours our safety and our neighbors and making sure that we are um together. I think it's symbolic. I don't necessarily believe that it might change a lot. But it is symbolic from our, our uh community uh to, to help to move. Uh, we've given the chance to come speak to us, and if he, he still wants to continue to speak with, with our groups, he will show up as well.
Okay, I, you know, I appreciate all your comments and um I'm sorry, AB one oh nine and uh Prop forty-seven and fifty-seven, Mr. Davis. Were a degradation of our system and they were sold to us really without understanding that this is really what was going to happen. And now, uh, I do believe that our city can say that we don't like this, we're not happy with your performance. We have a county supervisor that looks closely at their areas that they cover. And they have a mouthpiece and they have a vote. And they have a vote also with the city of Los Angeles. I think it's very important that uh we, as a city, um and we've heard it tonight, um that our community, you know, ninety-five percent aren't happy with this. I agree in discussion. But at some point, you have to stand up and say, we're not happy with what's going on. Cassie can still discuss this. Mr. Gascon would like to discuss it with you guys. But the point is, is that what boss comes into a new business that doesn't even talk to his employees? I mean, you heard it. You heard it from Mr. Otomi. I mean, that's just unheard of. In order to get consensus and get, get a, a good working group, you discuss. You discuss at that level. You just arbitrarily move the needle and change the way people the way the criminals are criminalized as far as how they, they serve time or, or how they do parole or, or, or whatever the situation is, but um, I'm sorry, I just, I feel that our vote of no confidence has a lot to say to our supervisor, Catherine Barker, and say, we're not happy. We can still have discussion down the road. Um, uh, but I, I, I'm sorry, I believe in the vote of no confidence. I think our residents have spoken. I think uh this has been going on for some time. And I think it's time for us to uh to move forward and show our support with our twenty-three plus other cities that have voted uh for this and a no confidence against our district attorney. We need representation to protect our residents, protect our police department. Protect, protect our employees. So I, I'm in full favor of a vote of no confidence for this.
Tim, one more thing I'd like to say about Cassie. I still believe that it'd be great if you could reach out to them and meet with them. When I say it's a small group that we all can't be a part of, we can't. The other three of us can't. You can only have two council members at one committee. So that's what I'm talking about. We'd all love to be there to hear this if he even shows up, even if he sends somebody. But when I talk about like that, here was an opportunity because it's agendized to talk to all of us, talk to the community that comes on board. You saw how many people, you know, called in tonight. I wrote down every single name that called. And it's just, that's what I'm talking about. We're representing the whole community, not just our own. So that's what I'm talking about.
Well, I need, if you wanna push this forward.
So a couple pieces to, to, to reiterate on. One is, I don't know that uh Gascon's o- office is gonna be as interested in talking to Cassie if council votes no confidence in a resolution. Because he wouldn't be motivated to do it. He'd say, why would I just run into that hostile crowd? Two, I think our voices are heard even without a resolution. This discussion carries weight. It's not, not just a resolution that carries the weight. And three, if it's an open discussion with the DA, I'm certain that everybody from the whole community would be invited. We wouldn't be making city decisions. These are individual decisions. Cassie's helping to coordinate the conversation. So I don't believe that any council member would be uh restricted from attending the meeting. So I'm interested, I'm interested simply in tabling this until we have that meeting. And then we can determine after that whether we wanna do a vote of no confidence. I don't think, I don't think a vote of no confidence does anything for us except creates a political stamp. That's it.
We've heard that, Miss Councilmember Carter. You got something else?
I know, I was just sort of make the motion.
Councilmember Law.
Yeah, I just, you know, again, I just wanna reiterate, this is not in, in, and, and I don't want folks to think that, you know, this is about um, you know, us not caring or, you know, not listening to, you know, the the public or anything like that, because I, I hope I am clear in what my aim is or what my belief is. And my belief is, we have to figure out a solution because there are problems. Um, you know, in talking to law enfor- Um, you know, in talking to law enforcement, there are gaps, right? There are things that need to be addressed. Where where are we with diversion programs? Where are we with um prosecuting, right? We where are we with all these things? And so I would echo your, you know, Councilmember Davis's statement that, let's table it so we can have the discussion. And if that discussion doesn't happen or if it's not fruitful, it doesn't stop us, from then doing, you know, bringing this back to the table to to have the conversation. But I don't want to chill the conversation or thwart it in any way, shape or form, because again, if the goal, if the goal that everybody has stated, and I don't think that I miss speaking this point at all. If the goal is the safety of our communities, is the ability to rehab those people that can be rehabbed, is the ability to prosecute those people who cannot and will not be rehabbed. Then again, I don't see how the vote of no confidence is moving us forward in that direction at this time. So I would strongly suggest that we table it, try to have that conversation through Cassie and move that forward so we can make some real change, and be an agent of real change. And if that doesn't work, then bring it back.
DA uh Gascon has has shown that even with the reforms, if if you don't prosecute, the diversion programs can't even happen. They're not even presented to the people. So, and I I think, I think that the, you know, if he really wants to talk to us, even, yeah, if you say he doesn't want to talk to us because we're a hostile community, then that shows what he's not talking to his own people. Um, and I I think we need to just, it's it's a message and the message should be sent.
I do agree.
Okay, can I make the motion then?
Please.
I I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty-one sixty-one, for a uh city vote of a no confidence on DA Gasco.
I'll second it.
Go call, Mr. Rusty.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
I don't believe this is the way we get to public safety, so I vote no.
Mayor Hepburn.
Absolutely, yes. We move on to the next item. We are item D, is that correct, Mr. uh Rusty?
Uh, hang on a second. Uh, yes, Street, uh, D Street reopening, that is correct.
Who's gonna bring that uh?
I think Eric Shear.
There he is.
There he is.
Good evening, Director Shear, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor and council members. Uh, tonight before you, um, I'm presenting a request by the Old Town Laverne Business Improvement District, um, to reopen D Street uh for um vehicle traffic and parking uh immediately. Um, as the council's aware, on July first, two thousand twenty, the city uh promptly closed down the section of D Street between Medina and Third, to allow for outdoor dining expansion for those existing restaurants on that street. Um, with the orders that were put in place that uh excluded indoor dining at that time. Um, last summer, there was widely successful. There was a lot of use on it. Um, even into the winter months until outdoor dining was closed for about two months, uh, when the street was briefly reopened and then closed back down to allow the extension. Um, the Old Town Board uh had discussed actually continuing the closure through all of summer, and to align it with the reopening of school, and the University of Laverne's got coming back into session on August twenty-third. Um, but since the June fifteenth date, when there was no further restrictions on indoor dining, or distancing for restaurants, um, there has been a dramatic decrease in the use of the outdoor space. And so the businesses in on D Street in the area, um, ha- have been asking for the street to reopen because it's not, it's really not being used, uh, definitely not as much as it was last summer. Um, and so the board and the association uh but voted unanimously to ask that we reopen the street permanently. Uh, be mindful, though, this was prior to the latest masking indoors again. Um, and so, um, we are flexible. If there are, for some reason, further restrictions either at the county or state level, that otherwise restrict indoor dining at some point in the future. We always have the ability to go back to this current setup with the closure to allow those restaurants to have that outdoor space. Also, in the meantime, we've indicated to the businesses that um, if they wish, they could apply for no fee permits to um have additional sidewalk dining, and or potentially look into uh building out uh expanded patio spaces within the parking spaces directly in front of their location. Um, if they wish to do that as well. So we've given that out to them. We've indicated to the businesses that should the city council agree to this at this time, that we would plan on reopening the street on Thursday morning, this Thursday, the twenty-second. Um, and so with that, the chair of the Old Town Business Improvement District, Craig Walters, is also on the line. If you have any questions of myself or him.
Thank you, uh, Director Shear. Mr. Walters, good evening. You, would you like to enlighten us a little bit as uh to tag along with Mr. uh Director Shear and talk about?
Lightment might be a little bit of a difficult thing to accomplish, but uh, uh, actually, Eric, I think covered things really nicely. Um, a little over a year ago, as he mentioned, the council and staff acted very uh decisively to close the street. Um, I think there's no question that it really made the difference between several businesses surviving or failing. Uh, s- some were right on the very edge of going under before this this action was taken. From the very beginning, it was understood that uh this was a temporary action, until the restaurants could resume one hundred percent occupancy inside. And so what we have now is um, we have the hundred percent occupancy. The street is just blazing hot. And so during the summer, it's just too hot to be out there. There are a few random people, um, in the evenings or maybe a few, but the vast majority of um, the restaurants in particular and other businesses um also would like to see the street reopened. Um, parking will soon become an issue. University of Laverne is slated to reopen mid-August. Uh, and so the the parking we've enjoyed for the last year and a half, at the library parking lot next to Monero Square will no longer be available to the public. Um, also about that same time, early August, it's expected that D Street, that Arrow will be closed for gold line construction, uh, which creates some other confusing, you know, uh, another confusing element to the to the area. Um, I I hear it often, people saying, you know, it it's time, we need to, get it back open. I've had several people ask if we're having a a permanent street fair down there. So, um, I think everybody, with very few exceptions, is ready for it to happen. Uh, I'd like to throw one other thing in there. We have had, several people in the community express interest in this being a permanent thing. They like the idea that uh, people, bikes, dogs can walk around in Old Town. And I like it too. I like, I like the idea of a pedestrian um, street, pedestrian areas. Unfortunately, D Street and that block in particular is not the best place for that, given that uh from Arrow Highway to, Foothill, that's the only uh through street in the center of town. Uh, it is right next to our public safety. It it's a very key avenue to have open. And plus the fact that any permanent inclo- or permanent closure really would require a lot of thoughts, and as far as how this could be accomplished, uh, I assume a lot of expense to do it well. And that's not gonna happen very quickly. So um, with that in mind, we as a as a board have not taken a position pro or against a permanent um closure of the street. Uh, we see this as a as lifting the temporary closure. And any discussions on on anything different could happen at a later date. But, you know, the final thing to say is, you know, all of the, all of the business members in Old Town, have been very appreciative of all the work that uh the council has done to support the businesses, the staff has done. Um, Mayor Hepburn has attended, actually, I think he's attended more meetings of the Old Town District than some of some of our board members. Um, you know, we appreciate the the interest, the attention. And uh, we're we're happy that we're at a place that uh the businesses are doing well. In fact, talking to several restaurants, uh, there are several that are doing better than pre-COVID. So um, you know, we're ready to get back to a normal there. If something changes down the road, as Eric mentioned, that the numbers go up, we need to revisit this. That can happen, but for right now, we're ready to get back to business. Thank you.
Walters, do we have any questions for Mr. Walters or uh Director Shear? Mr. Davis?
Yes, um, it's good to see you, Craig and Eric. Um, I guess that the, the immediate question on my mind is, does the recent masking mandate um, influence your decision to open D Street or what kind of influence do you think that might have?
I, in fact, just before this meeting, I asked Eric if he had any new information on that. And, uh, I think that's a wait and see, but uh we're at a point that we really need to go ahead and move forward. Uh, if something needs to change, you know, that that can be revisited. We found uh, once last year, uh, the street was reopened for a while, uh, when outdoor dining was prohibited. And then, they were able to close it down. Um, so I I think we need to move forward at this point.
So maintaining flexibility is the key, is what I hear you saying. And opening up now is appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, I think our city has proven very well that we adapt very quickly and and uh what comes to our businesses between the business assistant grants and, opening and closing that street. We, the city's done an unbelievable job. And I appreciate everybody's support, but uh, uh, Director Shear's team and uh uh Public Works and Community Services and, it's taken a village, but I'll tell you, and Mr. Rusty also, uh, it wouldn't have happened. And also the Divid just being so flexible and, so open and just helping them to go through this. We've been, it's been more than a success. I'm proud of everyone because, there's little, a lot of businesses, a lot of cities have gone away. We haven't. We haven't. It's just a testament to how well we function. Anyway, I'm sorry, Robin, our Councilmember Carter.
Um, hi Craig. I did want to tell you too that how wonderful it's been over this long period that the re- the businesses that were not restaurants, supported it. You know, because I talked to the hairdressers, the jewelry stores to make sure they were okay with it when we were gonna extend it. And they at, they said absolutely, you know, we know it's temporary, but we want them to do good. And on the other note, I think going back to Shop Laverne, it was eat in Laverne, you know, during COVID. You know, use our local restaurants. The community really bought that concept and supported our businesses. So I'm so happy they did so well.
Well, and I would be remiss also if I didn't say the Chamber of Commerce was extremely instrumental in the success of all of our businesses. They were on it all the time. So. Good.
Oh, you know, one of the, one of the bright spots about this pandemic experience is it really has brought, people together. And we've seen that in Old Town. Robin, as you mentioned, uh, there are businesses who, who really have been hurt a little bit by the closure, but they were supportive. They wanted to support the restaurants. And actually, during the months where the outdoor seating was heavily used, uh, they they even saw a bright spot because there were people who never before had walked, around downtown and uh, you know, looked in their windows and seen what they had to offer. And so, um, you know, everybody was very supportive, but now it's time to get back.
Thank you very much. We do have a attendee that would like to uh speak. Uh, could we, close this down and go to public comment and then we can come back to council? Yes, JR, public comment. Mr. Salinas, good evening again.
Hello, I just have a question. If we were to open up the street again, is there a way we can like, ha- close the street again on like certain days of the week, like every Friday, outdoor dining can happen, because I like the idea of like having the outdoor dining like once a week because it just, brings more livelihood into the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Is that something you want to answer, Mr. Rusty?
Well, I think it's something that if uh, as as Craig had said, that if it's something that Divid wanted to explore, the challenges would be that temporary closure does create complications. It's uh not, it, you set up the closure and it's there, but if you're taking it up and down, there's a lot of manpower involved in it. So I think there's, there's a lot of things that would have to be looked at before we could say we could easily do that.
There's also outside dining also. We're giving them with tables, but also they have the opportunity to close the parking space down to, build out a small little part of the restaurant. Is that correct, Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Cute to do that. I know it's expensive and that's one of the things. I'm sorry.
In mind, the other thing for the benefit of the restaurants right now is the lax on the ABC and the, what's considered your operating location. That's a temporary consideration and will eventually roll back to traditional inside your door. So, that will likely remove that motivation or interest for that outdoor uh in the sidewalk area. So, there's a lot of unknowns at this point to say that's a good idea or we should move forward doing it.
I also think it's not just the cost of the city, but the restaurants alone also have their tents and move in and move out. They they might not want to ever uh keep doing that for one day a week as well, so.
Councilmember Lau, you had a question?
No, it wasn't a, it wasn't a question. It was just a comment that, you know, I really appreciate everything that, you know, everybody has been doing because this is something that, you know, has required us to be very nimble, um, you know, and very um flexible. And so, you know, and I know we're a little bit different than some of the other cities that have a little bit of, wider streets that I think they've been able to um deal with parking a little bit better than than we have. And so that's that's a little bit of a bummer, but I guess my, plug for folks is that, you know, maybe park further away and and take the walk or take the take the cycling route, you know, so that we can continue to support our businesses. If you are really uh hoping to have some of that, you know, outdoor dining extended, you know, don't give them, don't give our restaurants grief. If you don't find parking nearby, just park farther and and just, be happy because I I think this is a, this has been a difficult time and I applaud the businesses for doing everything that they can. And um, you know, Craig and your group, like, it's, it's amazing to see how you all have have convened and worked things out and, uh, there, I know there have been some difficult discussions. So thank you for for marshaling that through.
We we have another individual.
And may I suggest that we take all the public comment before.
Take all the public comments, then we'll come back to anyone. Yeah, I noticed uh we have one raised hand. Good evening, Ms. Brainard. Hello again. You're muted. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you so much for voting no competence. We all listen in. Actually, we have a lot of people listening. So thank you to listen to us. And other things I want to um, bring up is something about Pomona cabinet meeting tonight. We missed that. Nobody really think about meeting.
That can be on public comment. We're still on the uh opening of D Street. So, uh, if you could wait and hold till the end of the meeting, we have public comment, if you don't mind, unless you, so, so, there we go. JR, I don't see any more hands uh.
No other requests for this item, sir?
We'll go ahead and close public comment and come back to council. Do we have any more discussion on this item? Again, I think uh Director Shear and also uh, Mr. Walters, you guys have been wonderful and also our staff. And I mean, I can't, it it was so successful. And hey, we jump like jackrabbits these days. I mean, if it has to happen to happen, we'll close it back down again if things do. But I think we just wait and see. And I I think the masking, hopefully, I'm gonna be positive and say that you go to the restaurant with a mask on, you sit down, you take it off and you enjoy your meal and with your friends and family. And, we'll move forward with that. But if things change, then we'll address them as soon as they come and do it quickly like we always do. So I need a motion.
I will move that the city agree to reopen D Street to vehi- vehicular traffic, allowing for individual businesses to apply to have extended, outdoor dining in the adjacent parking spots, if or spaces if desired in for the foreseeable future.
That's a long one. Second on long one, yes. You have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Crosby, uh, roll call.
Aye.
Councilmember Crosby?
Yes, thank you.
Member Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Hepburn.
Yes, and thank you all. Thank you. Uh, move to C, ordinance number one 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 zero zero flavor tobacco ban and expanded definition of smoking. Mr. Rusty.
Mayor, in a minute, um, I will uh turn it over to Lieutenant Gonzalez and Jessica Vogel of uh the. Mayor, in a minute, I will turn it over to Lieutenant Gonzalez and Jessica Vogel of the Lung Association to give more of a presentation on it. But one of the things I wanted to point out is I know that there's been some, a lot of comments and questions have been raised as far as the menthol and the exclusion at this point. And that is being requested or recommended by staff at this point, considering the open-endedness on the appeal that is out there at the county level relative to that. Uh, it sounds like the timing of when that is supposed to be heard is like October, November of this year. Um, you know, one of the alternatives was to hold off and bring the whole thing forward, but we felt it was important to bring forward the ordinance in this form, um, providing the, the level of restrictions on vaping and the other flavored tobaccos and come back and address menthol once that's been fully vetted through the courts. So I just wanted to get that out, uh, up here because I know there was some questions raised from council um, as to the reasoning. So with that, and I think Lieutenant Gonzalez is not here.
No, Ms. Vazella's on. How are you? Good evening.
Yes.
Hello, everybody.
And while we're waiting for Sam, I'm not sure if he, oh, there he is. Um, I want to thank Jessica. She's done a lot of work over the last year, working with Youth and Family Action Committee as well as, uh, working with our staff to help pull together some of the ordinance language um, as well as some of the statistics that she'll see tonight. So thank you for that.
Are we, Mr. Gonzalez is there? He's on mute. Oh, there, there he goes. Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez. How are you? Oh, you're muted.
Can't hear you, Sam.
Can't hear you. Go ahead and mute and then try to talk.
No, something I think is wrong with his microphone. No.
It's not working. Unmute again.
If you can go to the little arrow next to mute and see if it says select a speaker if you're on the right speaker. No, we can't hear you still.
You look good tonight, though.
Jessica's not just involved with this tobacco issue. She's also IT specialist.
Whatever you need.
See if, if you can't get it, I'll go ahead and just.
Try to call him and possibly put him on speaker.
That's fine. As long as I don't get a feedback.
He'll have to just turn off his, he'll just have to turn off his computer. All right. You're going to call him, JR?
Yeah, let's see if we can adapt on the fly. Uh, we should be able to hear Sam.
I'm sure you're very capable of it, no doubt.
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry about the technical difficulties, uh, but we'll get over with the echo. Hopefully we'll be see that. Yes, good?
Yes.
All right. Well, good evening, honorable mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, members of city council. I'm here before you discuss the proposed adoption to amend the city's municipal code into sales of flavored tobacco and expanding the definition of smoking. Uh, how do I adjust this here? So let me begin by telling you how we got here. Uh, the police department was approached by the Youth and Family Action Committee, uh, known to many as White Fat, to bring forth what several cities across California and the nation have done, which is before you in regards to the ban of sales tobacco, flavored sales, sorry. The ban of sales of flavored tobacco, sorry. Uh, the department. Uh, what else? The department has worked closely with the Youth and Family Action Committee and American Lung Association who has compiled countless amounts of data to demonstrate the need to put forth a ban on sales of flavored tobacco. I will quickly point out an interesting statistic to our, uh, related to our youth that is worth noting, and I'm sure Jessica will attest that eighty-one percent of minors who have used tobacco reported that the first time they used tobacco was ex-flavored tobacco. So it's an interesting thing that we had seen, our stories, our officers sees the same thing. Uh, continuing the, the passing of the Tobacco Control Act of two thousand and nine allows cities to create a local rule related to the banning of sales of flavored tobacco. Eventually in two thousand and twenty, SB seven ninety-three was passed, signed by the governor banning the sales of flavored tobacco. And as the city manager mentioned, there's a referendum, uh, which in this case we excluded methyl cigarettes, which will more than likely come to the voters on November of two thousand and twenty-two. The Youth and Family Action Committee and the American Lung Association will be paying close attention to this matter and will probably later introduce it as, again, as the city manager indicated. White Fat has requested that the city amend its ordinance to incorporate this prohibition and not wait to the outcome of the election to ensure we have protection in place at the local level to protect our youth. As I mentioned, the proposed ordinance also expands the definition of smoking within the municipal code. And it's worth noting, uh, that the code prohibits smoking in areas like parks, airports, but it doesn't, it does not clearly define smoking. In two thousand and sixteen, uh, the passing of SB five amended the definition of smoking under the business code to include electronic smoking devices such as base and e-cigarettes. The proposed definition before you includes using a pipe cigar, uh, cigarette, electronic cigarettes, uh, or vaporizers to deliver an inhaled dose of tobacco nicotine or other substances. Lastly, uh, the American Lung Association, uh, the family, the Youth and Family Action Committee supports staff's recommendation of the proposed amendments. And staff recommends that the city council approve the amendment of chapter five point three seven of title five, one point zero eight of title one of the Laverne Municipal Code prohibiting the sales of tobacco, of flavored tobacco and amending the definition. So thank you very much for having me today. I know it was a long night, but you squeezed me in.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. And, uh, Ms. Vazella, do you have?
I do. Give me one moment. I've got some slides and I know that it's been a long night, so we'll try to go fast. Uh, just a few minutes. So my name is Jessica Vazella. Um, I work with the American Lung Association. I am here purely for educational purposes and can also serve to, uh, answer any questions regarding uh, flavored tobacco and something educational in that, in that way. So the American Lung Association is a voluntary health organization. Our mission is to save lives by improving lung health and preventing lung disease. One of our strategic imperatives is creating a tobacco-free future, uh, to support our vision of a world free of lung disease. So why are we talking about flavored tobacco? Uh, as Lieutenant Gonzalez, uh, talked about, there's lots of reasons. When I came into this community about two years ago, um, I met lots of residents and community stakeholders who were very concerned about youth vaping and flavored tobacco use in their community. Together we formed what's called Healthy Lungs Laverne, uh, a loose coalition in Laverne of those people who are interested and concerned. I've done lots of educational presentations with lots of community groups um, and with their support presented at the Youth and Family Action Committee, which as you know, voted in February of two thousand and twenty-one to recommend that council restrict all flavors tobacco sales. At the time, no exemptions were mentioned. And I also want to draw your attention to the slides, uh, to the pictures on the slides. They are all submissions from a photo voice project of students in Laverne, uh, Ramona Bonita and the university. And they are submitting their pictures, uh, to explain how tobacco impacts them. So this is a picture by Catalina Jimenez of Ramona Middle School, uh, of a bright, flashy flavored tobacco wrapper left in, um, a park near her house. So we're talking about flavors because flavors attract kids. In two thousand and nine, Congress banned flavored cigarettes, uh, calling them starter products for youth. Products that were left out at that time included menthol tobacco, smokeless tobacco and e-liquids. A large part of that is due to tobacco lobbying, um, and e-liquids really weren't too popular at the time. Menthol tobacco has been marketed to vulnerable populations like Black Americans and youth. It's easier to smoke and harder to quit and fifty-four percent of youth smokers who smoke, uh, say that they smoke menthol. Uh, top reasons, one of which, uh, teens report trying e-cigarettes is because of the flavors. This picture, uh, by Anthony Servin is taken, uh, he's a high school student and was taken right outside of Bonita. He called it comfort of vaping outside of school because he saw one of these flashy packages, um, left outside of school. The youth vaping epidemic is pretty staggering. Um, one in five high school students and one in twenty middle school students reports vaping in the last thirty days. And flavors are targeting young people. We've found that ninety-five percent of smokers start before the age of twenty-one. Eighty-one percent of tobacco users start with a flavor product, as Lieutenant Gonzalez had said. Flavors are easier to use and it's easier to become addicted. And youth and people who vape are actually four times as likely to start smoking traditional cigarettes after they use their vape. Uh, and this picture is actually a piece of artwork called Depression Sidekick by Kaylee Klaaki of Ramona Middle School. And it shows, um, a young girl in a, in a bathroom, um, and some of the negative consequences of vaping. So what have other jurisdictions done? On the state level, uh, as has mentioned before, Senate Bill seven ninety-three restricted flavored tobacco, including menthol, and it will be voted on in two thousand, uh, twenty twenty-two. At the federal level in, uh, April, the FDA announced the intent to ban menthol cigarettes and they cited that as, uh, intent to significantly reduce youth initiation as well as address health disparities. The picture here, uh, is by Rebecca Klaaki of Ramona, um, and she took a bunch of pictures of candy um, and soda products next to vape products and asked if you can spot the difference because they're so similar in their marketing. Next we talk about LA County. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, unincorporated LA County restricted flavors in a comprehensive policy. This prohibited all flavored tobacco products, including menthol and hookah. It set minimum price, pack size and prohibited the sale of tobacco products in pharmacies. Ends up, in addition to that, sixteen local jurisdictions have restricted flavored tobacco, including menthol. These cities include Burbank, Glendale, Ahambra, Culver City and others. And those local jurisdictions are not the ones facing lawsuits. Uh, furthermore, the lawsuits are about the entirety of the flavored tobacco bans. Where does Laverne stand on this? Uh, many of you already know that, uh, we conducted over nine hundred, uh, community resident surveys and we found that three in five residents support a law that would prohibit flavored tobacco products. In fact, we found that seventy-eight percent of the residents we surveyed thought that it was easy for youth to obtain tobacco products in their community. And unfortunately, we found that they were not wrong. Uh, one in five tobacco stores in Laverne was willing to sell a flavored tobacco product to an underage youth. Letters of support have been submitted from letters, uh, from residents and organizations who feel that this is important to them. Thank you for listening. Um, again, I would love to provide any information on flavored tobacco or any educational purpose that I can. Um, and I just thank the city and all of the community members that I've worked with, um, who are concerned about this issue. And I love that I am able to help amplify their voices. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. I really appreciate your passion too and all your, your data. It's very important for our youth to be protected. And Lieutenant Gonzalez, thank you too. Also, it's, this is, this is very important. I think we have, uh, three people for public comment. Uh, we probably, is there any questions for, for, uh, Ms. Vazella or, uh, Lieutenant Gonzalez? Before we go to public comment, we have, oh, well, yeah, we have a lot of public comment. So I think we should probably go to public comment, guys, unless you have a quick question for public comment. You do, Mr. Crosby? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, uh, the exemption in this, again, Mr. Rusty, is menthol and, um, hookah, it, correct?
It's, it's not, it's hookah for the existing hookah locations that we have in town.
Okay, just want to make sure that's clear because we did get the comment, uh, emailed to us earlier about that and didn't want to, that could get confused.
I don't know if you could hear me.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can. Perfect.
I got it working. So, uh, it does, uh, Mr. Crosby, it does include, uh, the two businesses, exclude the two businesses in town uh, with the shisha, uh, tobacco for, uh, use in hookah lounges. So it does exclude the two.
Very good.
Hopefully that answers your question.
Then we will, uh, let's move to, uh, public comment. JR?
And similar to the, uh, item before where we had a number of people wishing to do public comment, we've got, if, if you have the ability to raise your hand via the Zoom, that will be much more efficient and easy to help facilitate public comment. Um, for those that are, are just watching the live stream and have asked to be called, we will, we will call you, but it may take a little bit more time.
And I must remind everybody, we're on a three-minute timeframe. We do have quite a few callers. And also, if there's something to be repeated about your support or non-support of this, if you could keep it shorter so that people that have a new subject or, or comments that can take their time. So just, um, give courtesy to the other speakers. Uh, Ms. Carr, good evening.
Hi, good evening, council members. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my name is Annalisa Carr, Community Advocacy Director with the American Heart Association. The American Heart Association is encouraged by the action taken to establish an ordinance prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products in the city of Laverne. It is critical that the city council end the sale of all flavored tobacco products without exemptions. The tobacco industry is actively and aggressively working to addict new young people with easy access to candy flavored products. Just like e-cigarettes, other tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes, hookah and cigars come in kid-friendly flavors like cinnamon roll and gummy bear and are highly addicting. At least two-thirds of youth tobacco users report using tobacco products because, quote, "They come in flavors that I like," end quote. Menthol cigarettes are heavily marketed to kids, African-Americans, Latinos and the LGBTQ community. Menthol cigarettes are easier to smoke and harder to quit. More than half of all youth and young tobacco smokers smoke menthol cigarettes. Because of their extreme harm, we do not support policies that explicitly exclude or exempt menthol products. Additionally, flavored shisha tobacco has high levels of addictive nicotine and cancer-causing chemicals and is marketed to youth through sweet flavors like blueberry muffin and mango. Ending the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes and shisha tobacco will curb the tobacco industry's predatory marketing and protect Laverne residents. Over ninety communities in the state of California thus far have passed policies to end the sale of flavored tobacco, including menthol products to protect their youth. This includes unincorporated LA County, which has a comprehensive flavored tobacco policy in effect now. Given the significant amount of shared borders between Laverne and unincorporated LA County, we believe it is imperative that Laverne's ordinance mirror that of the county by ending the sale of all flavored tobacco to ensure access to these dangerous products is collectively reduced. This is an opportunity to prioritize the safety of Laverne youth with a comprehensive policy prohibiting the sale of all flavored tobacco without exemptions to help protect youth from nicotine addiction and tobacco-related death and diseases. We respectfully ask for your support of this vital public health policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
Just now. Mayor, I have Annie Teagan on the line.
Honey, okay. Good evening, Miss Teagan.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and city council members. Um, my name is Annie Teagan with the campaign for tobacco free kids and I'm, I'm calling in tonight to applaud you for taking action, um, to end the sale of flavored tobacco products in Laverne. Um, like seventy-five other cities, more than seventy-five now, across the state of California. Um, they've chosen this to pass a comprehensive ordinance that includes menthol cigarettes and all other tobacco products, uh, flavored tobacco products, that is, like tiny cigars um, and flavored vaping products. And ending this sale is critical to really combating the youth tobacco epidemic, um, that we're seeing. So many, so many kids, almost three million kids nationwide are vaping. Um, and as you guys know, we all remember fights, we certainly all, um, the majority of kids are starting on um, flavored products, including menthol cigarettes. So I just, um, wanted to make the point that I'm hoping that you'll consider a comprehensive ordinance this evening, if you choose to go forward, um, and if not, we encourage you to take the ordinance another day. Um, thank you so much for what you're doing, um, to combat the youth tobacco.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'll do one more phone call and then, um, I figured out I can be a little more efficient if I do a call and then one of the hand raises, so.
You, you just keep doing what you're doing, sir. You're doing great.
Mr. Mayor, I have Alfie Sanchez on the line.
Good evening.
My name is Alfie. I'm with, uh, Majestic Cycling. We've got the Laverne, uh, event director for Laverne Grand Prix, bike rates that we do in the city.
Goodness, there for me tonight.
President of the Quads Club. Um, so we're working with Jessica and obviously we, we definitely support healthy living and cycling, uh, in the community of Laverne as well as, um, all over, um, California area. And Jessica's been bringing this to my attention in regards to help supporting, you know, the ban of, of flavored tobacco. And we definitely support that, um, as well as definitely healthy living in the city of Laverne. Um, yeah, so just, I want to keep it short. Obviously, we just wanted to support specifically to have the city council, uh, definitely support the ban. to have the city council definitely support the ban of the flavored tobacco as well as the menthol. And again, we definitely want to support healthy living in the city of Laverne. I just want to thank you for your guys' time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for those with their hands raised, you will be prompted to be allowed to be brought in as a panelist.
Good evening, Ms. McGruder. You are muted.
Okay.
There you go.
Alrighty. Good evening, you all hard-working people. Good evening, Mayor Hepburn and City Council. My name is Carol McGruder, and I am one of the co-chairs of the African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council, and we have been fighting, we're California-based, but we've been fighting all over our country to get menthol and flavors removed from the market. We know that flavors entice children and young people to smoke, and that menthol is the motherload of all flavors. Tobacco control is a grassroots fight. It's a fight of cities, who, city after city after city, until you have that quilt of health and prosperity and giving each young person the opportunity to get through adolescence and come out healthier and whole on the other side. So when I talk to adults, it's our job to, to remove those minefields that impede them from coming out on the other side as a young adult and not being addicted to these addictive products. Before vaping came out, I said if cigarettes were created today, they would not be allowed on the market. But our FDA was asleep at the switch and let these products proliferate across this country, addicting our teenagers and young people. And so it's people, city councils like you, who have the opportunity and the power, you have the absolute authority to remove these products from your city, and I just want to encourage you to do that. Menthol in particular was perniciously and racially marketed to African-Americans, which now results in over eighty percent, ninety percent of black people who smoke, smoke a menthol-laded product. And that's because they were literally, literally given out to children as young as nine years old in the sixties and seventies, and we're living that legacy. So I want to encourage you not to wait for the state bill, not to wait for the FDA, but to do what you need to do to protect your young people and your citizens in your city. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McGruder.
Mayor, I have April Forrest on the line.
Hello, Ms. Forrest.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me. So my name is April Forrest, and I am a, I'm in a neighboring city. I'm from Plano. I'm a ER PH candidate, be at Plano Graduate University, and I'm also a parent. I wanted to be here tonight. It's important for me because I actually spend a lot of time in Laverne outside of work. You know, I do some shopping and I go to some of the restaurants, and you know, my favorite Target is there. But I just wanted to come tonight, and I wanted to talk about some surveys that we did. We did over nine hundred surveys. I was lucky to, you know, be a part of that. And so I just wanted to share some of the data that we collected. And so three out of five residents supported a flavor ban willing to be surveyed in Laverne. And seventy-eight percent of Laverne residents think it's easy for youth to get tobacco products in Laverne. And one in five retailers are willing to sell tobacco products to underage youth. So I just wanted to reiterate some of the facts that I'm sure you've already heard, but you know, that I found really important again as a parent. And that was it for tonight. So I wanted to say thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. Thank you for shopping Laverne. Target.
Mayor, I have Elise Wallace on the line.
Ms. Wallace, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Elise Wallace, and I'm a Health Promotion Specialist of the American Lung Association. I spent the last year working in the city of Laverne. This evening, I would like to highlight to the council the dangers of using menthol tobacco products and how these products disproportionately harm two specific groups: young people and African-Americans. The practice of adding menthol flavoring to tobacco products plays a critical role in building a new generation of tobacco users. Of youth ages twelve and seventeen years who smoke, over half smoke menthol cigarettes. Even though the smoking rate of non-menthol tobacco products is declining, menthol smoking rates have increased among young adults and remain constant among youth and adult users. This is not by coincidence. Menthol cigarettes have been aggressively marketed to young people. Additionally, menthol cools and numbs the throat and masks the harshness of tobacco smoke, which makes it easier for kids to start smoking and eventually become addicted. Data from the nationwide PAST study conducted by the NIH and FDA found that young menthol smokers are more likely to perceive menthol cigarettes as easier to smoke than regular cigarettes. This study also found that menthol-flavored cigarette initiation is associated with a higher risk of daily smoking. While young people may think these products are less harmful, this is not the key. Research shows that adults who smoke menthol cigarettes may attempt, make more attempts to quit smoking and have a more difficult time quitting due to menthols associated with increased nicotine dependence. In addition to youth, African-Americans have been the primary focus of big tobacco's predatory marketing tactics for decades. These tactics include placing more advertising in predominantly black neighborhoods and offering lucrative price promotions. Today, eighty-five percent of African-American smokers use menthol cigarettes compared to less than ten percent in the 1950s. The FDA Tobacco Product Scientific Advisory Committee concluded that African-Americans are disproportionately burdened by the health harms associated with menthol products, widening the health disparities gap. In large part, used to menthol cigarettes, African-American smokers have a more difficult time quitting smoking and die at higher rates from tobacco-related diseases like cancer, heart disease, and stroke. Restricting the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol, helps to eliminate tobacco-related health disparities and reduce undue harm to the community. I appreciate the council's celebration on this important matter, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Castro, good evening. You're muted. We're still muted.
Better?
Perfect.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council. My name is Primo Castro, Government Relations Director with the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. You know, make, obviously, we're making cancer a top priority for public officials and candidates at the federal, state, and local levels. We are urging this council to enact a comprehensive ordinance with no exemptions for menthol or flavored shisha. Again, I repeat, no exemptions for menthol or flavored shisha, prohibiting the sale of all flavored tobacco products without exemptions, remove much of the allure of these products, and is a key component of a comprehensive strategy to effectively help reduce tobacco initiation and subsequent addiction. ACSCAN is hoping to prevent a whole new generation addicted to nicotine. As we, you know, as some of the other speakers have mentioned before, you know, we're just trying to, in the name of public health, trying to help the youth of the city of Laverne not become addicted to tobacco. We all know, we, we all remember from the late seventies, the eighties, into the nineties, those, you know, some of those interesting advertisements that we used to see on television. You know, we just don't want to go ahead and see anybody's health get compromised because of something that, you know, that we could have prevented early on in their, in their lifetime. So please, you know, we ask that a full, comprehensive, with, with no exemptions for menthol or flavored shisha be enacted in the city of Laverne. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Castro.
Mr. Mayor, I have Kimberly Luna on the line.
Good evening, Ms. Luna.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and there is the City Council. Thank you so much for listening to all of us tonight. I know it's been a long night for you. My name is Kimberly Luna, and I'm a Health Promotion Specialist with the American Lung Association. I wanted to quickly provide some information and just reiterate some of the more startling facts about the current teen vaping epidemic. According to the most recent data from the CDC, nearly twenty percent of high school students and almost five percent of middle school students reported that they vaped in the past thirty days. Vaping has become very popular in just a few short years, and if you look at how vaping products are advertised to young people, you can quickly see why. They use tactics such as celebrity endorsements, hiring social media influencers, packaging that appeals to young people, and most especially, a wide number of flavored products. Currently, there are over fifteen thousand varieties, including flavors like gummy bears, pop a smurf, blue raspberry, grape bubble gum, and more. Additionally, as Jessica mentioned, ninety-five percent of smokers start smoking before they're twenty-one years old. So young people are the tobacco industry's primary target for gaining new customers. Vaping is so popular among young people, actually, that teens are nearly seven times more likely to vape nicotine than adults, and the overwhelming majority use flavors. According to the Department of Health and Human Services, if current tobacco use patterns persist, an estimated five-point-six million of today's youth under age eighteen eventually will die prematurely from a smoking-related disease. Finally, it's important to note that besides the general appeal of candy flavors to young people, flavors also serve another important purpose. Flavors mask the harshness of smoking and make it easier for young people to start this habit. Due to this and much more, the evidence is clear that the tobacco industry targets young people and uses flavors to start them on a lifelong addiction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I might ask, does any council member need to take a, like a two or three-minute break yet? Are we all okay? Wendy's got a big smile on her face. I'm fine.
You're good.
Fine. Okay, let's move on. JR?
Mayor, I have Reema Corey on the line.
Ms. Corey, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Reema Corey, and I'm one of the founding members of the National Hookah Community Association, which was established to protect and preserve the rich cultural tradition of hookah. Hookah has been around for nearly a thousand years and is practiced by Arabs, Armenians, Persians, Indians, and other minority communities that have come to America in search of a better life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Many started businesses doing what they know while sharing their customs and traditions. Now, these minority business owners are being told that their cultural tradition of hookah will be banned and their businesses closed due to an unrelated issue with vape. Hookah is not vape. Hookahs are three feet tall and can't be concealed in your backpack or pocket. It takes fifteen to thirty minutes to set up and costs over two hundred dollars for all its ten parts and components. Hookahs are not being confiscated at schools, and hookah is not the problem. Yet hookah will become collateral damage in the war against vape, resulting in a significant cultural impact in minority communities. We ask the Laverne City Council to consider this unintended consequence and Mayor SB 793, the California State Flavor Tobacco Ban, which addresses youth access and usage while also preserving hookah by limiting hookah tobacco to retail and lounge sales to twenty-one-and-over adult establishments that are compliant with local and state regulations. SB 793 is easy to comply with and enforce and create consistency with the state instead of a patchwork of regulations that will drive businesses out of the city of Laverne to other cities. Only exempting existing hookah lounges will put an expiration date on our cultural tradition. Please save hookah in Mayor SB 793. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm not going to pronounce it. Teresa's.
Yes, thank you. I am Dr. Tomas Teresa. I'm the Executive Director of the American Academy of Pediatrics, California Chapter Two. This is the Southern California chapter that represents over one thousand five hundred pediatricians in the surrounding seven counties. We have a vested interest in our youth and the health and the well-being of our youth, considering the fact that we represent pediatricians and children and youth in general. We have been in the midst of an epidemic since 2018, when it was announced as so by the Surgeon General. Never before have we had so many pediatricians prescribing smoking cessation therapy as we have been in the last three years. And we have been, not just us, but every chapter in the United States and the American Academy of Pediatrics in general, spending so much human power on the efforts to eradicate the growing pandemic of vaping that we've had. So Jessica Vazella said, "Flavors attract kids." This is, I'm not going to go into the details because a lot of people mention statistics, which I agree with, to further illustrate the comments of Primo Castro. Menthol is extremely dangerous and is the most evil decoy of the tobacco industry. Just to let you know, the reason they use menthol is that menthol is a local anesthetic. So for those who try tobacco for the first time, tobacco will cause so much hardness on your throat that will make you cough excessively, to which you would perhaps quit the attempt of continuing to smoke. However, the exposure to menthol soothes your throat, soothes your trachea, and your, your lung passages, your airways, so that cough is not induced. Therefore, you can extend your exposure to nicotine, which then in turn causes a lifetime addiction. Once you have an addiction to nicotine, it doesn't matter what you're smoking, you just need to smoke. Ask the representative.
We lost Mr. Teresa's. He's in Zoom heaven. There he is. There you go.
Thank you.
We lost you for a second.
Thank you. I'm almost done. So as the representative for the American Academy of Pediatrics locally, I want to thank you for the ordinance putting through, and I do encourage a comprehensive ordinance that has no exemptions, just because those exemptions actually do cause a lifetime addiction to those who get hooked by it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Teresa's.
Mayor Hepburn, I have Dejana Gill.
Hello, my name is Dejana Gill, and I'm a student at the University of Laverne and a member of the Women's Basketball Team. Going to the university every day, I would see flavored tobacco advertisements right across the street from the university and on the main street. It's clear it's being put in the faces of young students because it is located so close to where a majority of students will be, and tobacco companies purposely target younger audiences so they can get hooked and be lifelong customers. These advertisers aren't located too far from our local high schools and middle schools. Nicotine and chemicals harm a developing brain and may increase risk of other drug addiction. So why should it be sold and advertised in the most populous parts of the city or our families frequent? I want to encourage the council to prioritize the health of your residents over profit by voting in support of passing flavored tobacco and menthol restrictions. And I just want to thank you for your time, and I look forward to communicating for the rest.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bremner, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lori Bremner, and I'm with Parents Against Vaping eCigarettes, PAVE. PAVE is funded, run, founded, run, and powered by volunteers, and we are the parent voice in the issue of youth tobacco, both locally, statewide, and nationally. PAVE is so very grateful to you for prioritizing this critical piece of legislation. Lung health has never been more important than in the time of COVID, and flavored tobacco is now more than ever a deadly hook. We hear heartbreaking stories from parents who desperately seek help as they struggle with their kids' severe nicotine addictions. PAVE supports comprehensive ordinances that end the sale of all flavored tobacco products with no exemptions. with no exemptions, and that is what we urge you to support tonight. Excluding menthol would be a huge mistake and a social justice travesty. Minty menthol is absolutely a kid favorite, and almost forty percent of teenagers who vape use minty menthol, which numbs the throat and helps the poison go down. Additionally, kids who vape are four times more likely to begin smoking combustible cigarettes, often menthol combustible cigarettes, and they end up as dual users, dependent on both products, and thus even more severely addicted to nicotine. More than a hundred municipalities have passed flavor ordinances, most include menthol, and we hope to see Laverne join that growing list. The kids in Laverne deserve the same protections as the kids in the other municipalities. And despite what the hookah lobbyists and the people who sell hookah will tell you, hookah most definitely targets youth with fun flavors. The Cafe X20 Hookah Bar at the Laverne Town Center offers four-plate peach, breakfast cereal, white gummy bear, and sex-on-the-beach shisha flavors. Make no mistake, those flavors appeal to young people, and a typical one-hour session smoking hookah is like inhaling the smoke from a hundred cigarettes. And while it is true that kids can't sneak the giant hookah pipes that they use in the lounges into the high school bathrooms, they do use these little mini hookas. Can you see I'm holding it up to the camera? See the smiley face? These are definitely getting confiscated at schools, and they're attracted by the fun flavors that hookah offers, and they smoke shisha out of these cute little plastic pipes. So we strongly urge you to move quickly on comprehensive ordinances that do not include any exemptions. Any delay in implementation means more kids get addicted. Our kids simply cannot wait on the state or the federal government to take action. Please match the county. Be swift. Be bold in your actions for our youth. They're counting on you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Hepburn, I have Karina Funes. Sorry if I pronounced that badly.
Ms. Funes.
Don't worry. Hi, everyone. Good evening, City Council. My name is Karina Funes, and I am a Policy Manager with the American Lung Association, the leading health organization to advocate for lung health. Flavored tobacco products have historically been targeted towards vulnerable populations, and many jurisdictions have addressed this issue by adopting a comprehensive policy to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco products. We appreciate the city of Laverne for work with Jessica from the American Lung Association in strengthening their tobacco retailer license by considering the prohibition of selling flavored tobacco products. However, we believe that in order to fully address the issue, policies such as the one being proposed should also include menthol tobacco. Many local jurisdictions in Los Angeles County, throughout California, and across the nation have adopted favored policies that include menthol. Excluding menthol tobacco can lead to unintended health disparities among your community because menthol has historically been the flavor used to target certain demographics. By passing a comprehensive policy that also includes menthol tobacco, you are creating equitable policies that can help improve the health of the residents in Laverne and help prevent the next generation of tobacco users. We appreciate the council in taking the steps to pass a flavored tobacco policy and hope we consider a full comprehensive policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have Alex Menugian.
Mr. Menugian, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the kind of special accommodations to call me. Basically, my name is Alex Menugian. I own Cafe X20 Hookah Lounge. Although we are strong in our food, beer and wine, and patio seating, hookah's been a really big part of our business and how we strive in the shopping center. Saying that, you know, the smoking age being over twenty-one, we really control, just like alcohol sales, down to the point where even if a parent or an older person passes a hookah pipe to a younger who hasn't been ID'd, who's clearly underage, we remove the hookah without refund, and we've done a lot of pushback the few times we've had to do that. So, I have teenagers of my own in the city of Laverne. I live here. I've sadly caught my own children with vape. It's been a phenomenon, knowing that they're around the business, and at my home you could find hookah pads, yet they've not vaped, and these are athletes. They haven't lied to us about much that we know of, but it's been a real shock. So I'm all for everybody since then, and I'm not by any means putting my business in front of public health or the youth. But I know for sure that what it takes to purchase a hookah or rent one from a lounge is far from what these kids are going to. So in addition to taking away business from us, my biggest concern is that it's not going to affect, in my opinion, the children still getting their hands on these e-vape e-cigarettes because it's virtually impossible to set up a two-to-three-foot-long pipe, get charcoal burned somewhere, and sneak this in high schools or on the fields or at their little get-togethers. It is not a feasible thing to do. So I just appreciate the consideration, the strong consideration of carving out something that is not only a business, a means of income, it's part of the culture that we bring, you know, along with the food, the music, the ambiance of a cafe that sells hookah. Our doors are open, our pavies are open, and I assure you, nobody will ever, ever find youth smoking here or anything to that extent. So that's my impetus, and I really need putting you through to the cell phone and giving this chance to talk.
Thank you very much. Jaime Rojas, you may speak. You are on.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you. My name is Jaime Rojas. I'm with the National Association of Tobacco Outlets. We represent over sixty thousand retailers throughout the United States, and many of the retailers that sell tobacco in the city of Laverne are part of our membership. We ask a few things. We definitely do not support the ordinance as written. As many people have said, SB-793 will be in front of all the voters of California in November of 2022. There's been a patchwork of various flavor bans throughout the region and throughout the state, which is very confusing, and it does not allow or does not stop flavor bans to youth. The last line of defense is our local retailers. A lot of the small mom and pops, especially in the city of Laverne, as many of you know, sell only a limited amount of flavored tobacco products. Most of the issues, as stated by the state of California, FDA, is online sales, where there's little to no proof verification, as long as you hit a button that says you're over the age of twenty-one and over. One of the things that many of the speakers before me have not said is the reality that these flavor bans do not work. None of them have stated that the numbers of youth vaping, which is the issue, has gone down. As a matter of fact, last month, one of the studies that was supported by the FDA on the city of San Francisco shows that what this flavor ban did and was passed almost four years ago, what it did was a reversal. It increased youth smoking of combustible cigarettes and did not lower youth using vape, flavored vape products. We're also asking for, as many cities have done as well, is the inclusion of the business community and these retailers who are supportive of and follow the rules and regulations. The last three years, by the FDA and the state of California's compliance checks with youth's sting operation have shown one-hundred-percent success rate in passing these compliance checks by Laverne retailers. If there was an issue, the FDA and the state of California's numbers, which are stated on the website, would have shown otherwise. We're asking you to reconsider this, put together a workshop with retailers, and find alternative ways of solving issues that are not pertaining to the retailers of Laverne. One could be electronic point-of-sale systems that many stores use, like, for example, 7-Eleven, that uses a swipe system, or more or higher cost of penalties and removing of their tobacco retail licensing could be one of the extreme efforts of trying to stop some of the, some bad apples that might be out there. The members of the Laverne retail tobacco store owners are following the rules, have been compliant, and are part of the reason why these numbers within the youth have not gone higher.
Mr. Rojas, your time is up, but I really appreciate your comments, sir.
Thank you. Appreciation, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you're up. You're muted. There you go.
I'm muted. Hi, my name is George Johnson. I'm a member of the National Hookah Community Association. I manufacture traditional wooden hookah pipes, and Cafe X20 is my customer. They've been a longtime customer for a very long time. He's Lebanese Armenian and an integral part of, you know, our community. I wanted to bring up the point that somebody had made earlier about foreplay on the peach. It is a flavor that sounds fun, and I enjoy that flavor, and as long as youth aren't seeing it, I don't see the problem. Adults like flavors too, otherwise, you know, ice cream would only come in vanilla. So I just hope that we can come to a way of saving the retail portion of hookah and the lounges, because California requires the lounge exemption to have a retail establishment as well. So I just urge you guys to follow SB-793, language already vetted by California. It protects premium cigars over twelve dollars, which also contain some non-tobacco constituents that can be considered flavors, and it protects the longstanding tradition of hookah in twenty-one and over locations. That's a big distinction. I don't want our products in 7-Elevens, gas stations, liquor stores. I want our products in twenty-one and over stores that only adults are admitted to. So SB-793 accomplishes that. And that other lady who also mentioned the flavors held up what's called a oil burner. Those are meth pipes. That is not a hookah. That is a complete shock, and it's completely rude to our culture and our traditions to say that that is somehow a hookah. Where would you place the charcoal, lady? Where would you put the hookah tobacco? Hookah tobacco is wet and juicy. It's in honey and molasses. How could you even think to do that? Anyway, I don't want to take up all your time. Thank you so much. Please consider just following SB-793. Let's do what Gavin Newsom already signed. Let's do what the voters are going to uphold in 2022, but do it now.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And just a reminder, you'll be prompted to be brought into the room, so you have to accept being brought in as a panelist.
Mr. Abu, yes, you're on. You are muted. You are still muted. There you go.
Hello, how are you doing, guys? Thank you very much for having us here today. How are you guys doing? Hear me?
Very good. We can hear you very well. Please.
All right. I really appreciate all you guys do for all this case, and I just want to say I agree with Reema Kauri, what exactly she said, and I agree as well with Alex Menugian, and we're also looking for exemption, the hookah, from this case and all the retail tobacco. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Very much. Mr. Farage, you are on, but you are muted. There you go.
How are you doing, Mr. Mayor? How are you, council?
Good evening. Please begin.
Yeah, I'm just talking about, you know, because I'm part from the city and, you know, I'm part from Laverne, you know, about the decision for, like, vaping and tobacco. I heard the people before they talk, you know, most of these people, you know, we know this story about tobacco a long time ago. So we still, and we agree with the people who say, you know, most of the problem we have is, you know, not like us, like a small business, you know, almost we are a small business. We go with the rule. Nobody buying from us under twenty-one. The problem we have is it's online, and we built this business years and years to come into this point. So it's going to be, it's not like a fair to, like, if this decision you guys take it, we are appreciative of you guys who stay with us, you know, help our business, help us, like, community. If we're gonna close or we're gonna, this decision, nothing we can do, just, you talk about broken family, broken houses, because, you know, this is our living, and we go with the rule, we go with everything like you asked, and we go with the law and everything. The most complaint going online, and I agree with the people. So we take the complaint from nothing. We don't have anything to do with it. So appreciate if you guys just look at it like a human and be fair with us. And exempt law to.
Local.
Local with us, and appreciate for you guys, and have a beautiful night, and we hope you take our, what do we talk about it in serious thing? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we also believe about you. You're gonna go with us, help our business. This is why we go with you and we vote for you, and we hope you stay with us, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Tom.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Farage. Mr. Spence, you're on.
Hello?
You're on. We can hear you.
Oh, sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Nolan Spence. Hookah is an ancient culture and tradition practiced by many minority groups with our communities, and like one of the previous speakers, I was deeply offended by the person representing American Cancer Society. Anything marketed as a mini hookah or e-hookah does not exist. It's a marketing ploy. Traditional hookah, which I care about and want to protect, is used with tobacco in a clay bowl with hot coals on top of it in order to smoke. It's extremely cumbersome, and anything marketed as a mini hookah or an e-hookah is not traditional hookah. And I wanted to also make that clear, so these heinous lies are no longer spread. But aside from that, I would like to urge you to follow the rhetoric in SB-793. I think some of the best line of defense for stopping youth access to flavored tobacco or any tobacco are our responsible licensed retailers and having them as your line of defense to avoid people running to online markets or the black market. So I please urge you to save hookah and follow SB-793. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Spence. Ms. Batista, good evening. You are muted. You're there.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please begin.
Thank you so much for letting me speak and giving me this time, and also thank you for taking this time away from your families to discuss this very important topic. As a youth in our community, I have three things that are my goals, and one of them, number one, is to prevent youth from smoking or vaping tobacco. Number two, I'd like for Americans to exercise their rights that we've been given, and number three, I'd like to help small businesses. Growing up, my mother always raised me to learn right from wrong. She never took things away from me, but taught me how to choose, and she did this through education. For fun, we would go out, we'd get people to register to vote, and I learned how to exercise their rights as Americans, and with this, we didn't care if you're Republican or Democrat, we just wanted you to educate yourself and to learn how to vote. With that, I think it's so amazing that you guys have allotted all this time, money, and resources to help prevent youth from smoking, and as you may know, California has done the same with SB-793, and I think it would be wasteful and redundant to use all of your resources and time and money to mimic what SB-793 to mimic what SB seven ninety three is trying to accomplish. And I think that that money would be better served in developing programs for educating the youth. We need to educate this upcoming generation who will one day overcome the seats that you guys are sitting in tonight. They're going to be our leaders of tomorrow and we need to teach them right from wrong instead of taking away options from them. With that, I'd like to move on to my second point of exercising our rights as Americans. California is going to do a vote on this in 2022, which is where, as Americans, as voters, we're able to voice our opinion and not have a group take away a right from us collectively, but for us to come to terms, educate ourselves and vote on this accordingly. And number three, small businesses, small businesses are going to be deeply affected by this. As a whole, America is moving towards healthier trends. And we've seen that combustible cigarettes, that vaping is less dangerous than combustible cigarettes. And with that, a lot of sales that these small businesses are making aren't traditional tobacco cigarettes. They are vaping because it is healthier for lungs and for the body. And with this, these businesses are going to lose a lot of sales. With that, a lot of businesses will be closing down. And with that, landlord owners are going to have lots of open vacant spaces and lots.
You're coming to the end of your time. If you could close it out, please.
If there's one thing that you guys will remember from today, please make it be this. When I was asking someone about what they thought about this, they said, I don't care if they take away tobacco. I don't smoke. To which I replied, if you're okay with someone taking away a right, just because it doesn't affect you, one day they will be taking away a right that does affect you.
Ms. Batista, your time is up. Thank you very much. Ms. Allison, good evening again.
Good evening again.
You've got an echo. You have to turn one of the others off. That's better.
Had to run away. Okay, I first just wanted to express just how thankful I am for all the facts and education and engagement and discussion that's happened on this topic. I think it's great and should happen in every topic. I do have a couple of things I'm wondering. With there being so many moving parts, like the previous discussion talked about upcoming legislation, pending litigation on the methanol, I'm wondering two things. If the city does pass this and methanol remains excluded, I'm wondering if the city plans to or is willing to commit to revisiting that methanol exclusion once it is no longer at issue and if it is appropriate at that point. And then the larger issue that I kind of wanted to raise, the tobacco industry is smart and they're going to keep developing and expanding and ensuring that they market to young people because we know that's how they gain profit. So I'm wondering what we can do as a city and as a community to make sure that we're moving towards wellness, being on the forefront of our priority list. Because if we're really interested in empowering young people to make healthy choices, we need to make sure that we're not just restricting their access, but that we're also being proactive in engaging them in their wellness, whether it's through the school district or whether it's through community programs. How are we pursuing mental health? How are we pursuing minimizing the levels of anxiety and depression and loneliness and all of the things that provoke kids to fit in and utilize any means necessary to do that? I just hope that we as a city and a community can take a step back and use this issue that clearly so many people care about to look at the greater issue of how we're engaging and empowering younger people. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. Ms. Batista, good evening. You're muted. There you go. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Myra and I'm with NATO and I represent the Chambers of Commerce and the retailers. And the reason I'm on tonight is to make sure that we understand what's at stake. So what's going on is we're talking about flavored tobacco being banned. Flavor tobacco means every single flavor that's out there except for tobacco flavor. So that means if that gets taken off the shelf, the only thing left is going to be Marlboro Red. And with that happening, what is causing is the retailers to not be able to sell that product. We've seen this historically. I also represent 7-Eleven and in San Francisco, which was brought up tonight, it has not shown that people are smoking less. They're just going to different cities. They're obtaining their cigarettes and they're from online sales. They're obtaining them from different cities. And so what's happening is you're not solving the problem. If the problem is to make people quit smoking, then with all these regulations and all these restrictions, we're not really solving that problem. I think what it is, is lack of education. We need more education. We need more awareness. That came up as well as tonight. We all agree that children should not be smoking. But also taking away a right, especially when retailers are the ones that are the main line of defense on selling it to anyone under eighteen, under twenty one, is not the solution. If we think about it, is let's think about how we can solve this problem. So by making it illegal, we're putting it into the black market. The black market now is going to be not FDA approved. We're going to have people selling like other drugs to kids because the kids are not going to not do it unless they stop by education. Nothing that's prohibited is going to make them stop. So as a retailer representative, some of the, I spoke to over 20 retailers today and they were telling me they're all, most of them were minority owned businesses. They don't understand the legal system. They're here obeying the laws. They have almost a hundred. If you look at the FDA, the sting operations, they have over a hundred percent. You don't have a problem with underage being sold like it was presented earlier. I think the problem here is that if we get this taken away and we don't wait for SB seven ninety three, then the people are just going to a different city. So I think that some of the issues right now need to be, what, how do we fix this problem?
You're coming to your time, Ms. Batista, if you could finish up, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I say wait for seven ninety three. Let's start committees and make sure that we understand what the retailers are doing and working with the community. They're not selling to youth and make sure that the youth are getting education. And that's what I would love for the city council to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Ives, good evening. You are muted.
Hi.
Hello.
I just, hello, I just wanted to point out that anyone who sees hookah flavors like foreplay on the peach or white gummy or sex on the beach, they think it's a drink. If we can regulate alcohol, we can regulate hookah. Both is at the age of 21 and at a restaurant or lounge IDs are checked. Before anyone is served, I agree with Rima, Corey and Alex Manugian. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I've tried to allow Mr. Abu to come in a couple different times now and haven't been successful. Going to try the allow to talk feature and see if we can at least get him the ability to.
He's on right now. Mr. Abu, can you hear us? You are on mute. We see on the screen, Mr. Abu, but you have your mute button looks on, your mic is off.
Yeah, I'm guessing that, oh, there we go.
Mr. Abu.
Yes, how you doing?
Good evening. We can hear you now. Please proceed.
Thank you for having me speak. I'm the owner of Jake's Smoke Shop and I've been hearing all the, you know, comment and everybody's talking about the flavor and the youth buying stuff. You know, I've been that location since 2003. And I never have any ticket or anything to do with any like youth or anything with the trouble. And now all seven of you guys came up with that law to ban all the flavored tobacco and stuff. But the idea, you know, the thing, even if you banned it in Laverne, people, they're going to go to Pomona, people, they're going to go to Clermont. You know, you're not fixing the, so the, the problem, you create more problem. I think, I think all the youth is getting the flavor stuff online. Now I speak to a lot of parents and that's the issue, you know, a lot of stuff is getting aligned. But you guys get in blaming all the smoke shop for it, you know, and I appreciate if you guys think about all the family behind all the smoke shop and whatever's going to happen. And, you know, and I appreciate whatever you guys can do for us and thank you. Appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Abu. JR.
Mr. Mayor, that's all that I see for hands raised and I was able to get through all the phone calls in between talking to people via Zoom.
You're doing excellent tonight. Thank you. I know it's difficult with the phone calls because you're trying to see their names and it's not in front of you. So I do appreciate that and you've done a great job. With that, I think we're going to go ahead and close public comment and come back to council. Counsel, comments, questions for Mr. Lieutenant Gonzalez. Have we lost our other? I don't see her on the screen.
Jessica, are you talking about?
Yeah. It was in public comment and I had her moved out. So if there's questions, we can have her.
Yeah, we can bring her back if necessary. Mr. Crosby.
Yeah, with Ms. Carter, I'm part of the YFAC committee and really truly support this ordinance how it is written.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Carter.
Yes, I agree with him. Our committee has discussed this for quite a few months. As you know, for over 30 years, we have supported protecting our youth. And we work very closely with the police department and we just feel this was the best way to bring it forward. And I support it 100%.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Councilmember Lau.
Just wanted, just a point of clarification, because I think it may have gotten missed or lost in the conversation. The, I hesitate to call an exemption because it's not explicit, but I won't split hairs at this point regarding menthol. It's because there is pending litigation. And so it doesn't preclude us, once that litigation is concluded, to make a determination to amend or add to the ordinance or to change the ordinance to include it. So I just want to make that clear. Because, you know, in addition to a responsibility to our youth, you know, we obviously have a fiscal responsibility to the citizens not to engage in or to refrain from activity that might open us up to a lawsuit, particularly when there is an end in sight in terms of the litigation being resolved by the end of this year. So I just wanted to point that out and, you know, obviously councilmembers, you know, Carter and Crosby, if I misspoke on that, please feel free to correct that, but that's my understanding.
And if I could jump in, your understanding is correct. The menthol is not an exemption per se. It's definitional when the definition of flavored does not include menthol at this time.
Correct. And the language is including but not limited to. But again, I won't, I won't go down the attorney route. I will just leave that.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm of the same mind as Councilmember Lau and that is I support this ordinance as it is. And I look forward to being able to amend the ordinance with the inclusion of menthol as soon as we get to.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. You couldn't have said it better because the menthols got me very concerned. But as Councilmember Lau so eloquently, attorneyally put it together and spoke and Mr. Cress, we need to be careful, but that is definitely on my radar. I think menthol needs to be banned. I think that it's, as we stated, it's a bad thing, but I think I take my hat off to, to Councilmember Carter, Councilmember Crosby, and also Mr. Gonzalez, Lieutenant Gonzalez. And I think this needs to happen. We need to protect our youth and protect our community. So, but I would like to see this when it does come back and we do address this and we put the teeth in it. Once they decide in the courts that if we can do menthol, let's put that in there too down the road. With that, any other discussion or any more questions for staff or Lieutenant Gonzalez or Jessica? Then I need a motion.
The only thing I would add before you do, there was one question about the education and what other efforts we're doing. I think it's worth pointing out that the police department received a anti tobacco grant a couple of years ago. And Sam, what was the amount on that? And that was to deal with education as well as enforcement. So we are taking this as well.
That is correct. And it was upwards over $100,000 for tobacco education and geared towards enforcement as well as, you know, when we send in decoys into buying tobacco. And that's some of the statistics that were shared today by some of the speakers of what was done prior to the bringing this measure to US.
Very good. With that, I'll accept the motion. Do we have a motion?
I'm not sure how this is worded. So if somebody else has it, I mean, are we're waiving the further readings and we're going to just adopt it? Is that what?
You're going to introduce it.
What do you mean by introduce it?
Well, that's what you do on first reading of an ordinance.
Oh, okay.
First, we introduce and then we come back.
Okay, make the motion to introduce it.
Mr. Crosby. Second.
I'll second it. Thank you, sir.
Roll call, please, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Lau.
Aye.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Heffron.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Now I need to read it. So.
Yes, please.
Ordinance 1100, an ordinance of the Laverne City Council amending chapter 5.37 Tobacco Retailers of Title V of the Laverne Municipal Code of the Sale of Flavored Tobacco Products, amending chapter 1.08 of Title I.
Nicely done. Thank you. We will move to item number D. Propose Memorial Garden and Peace Pole at Mills Park, case number 57-21 PPR-5601 Wheeler Avenue. Mr. Shear.
Good evening.
Have the floor, sir.
Yes, thank you. Before you tonight is a proposal by the Rotary Organization of Laverne to build a small memorial garden and peace pole at the southern end of Mills Park at Wheeler and Old Wheeler Road. This memorial is being placed in memory of Dr. Garbus Dur Yen, who was a longtime Rotary member and, you know, the council mayor recalled it. You recently had adjourned a meeting in his honor as he unfortunately passed away in this last year. The memorial itself is pretty simple. It's fairly small. It would have a granite base with a six foot peace pole with inscriptions into that pole in the base as well. The logo of the Rotary inlaid into the granite base. There'd be three benches placed around the peace pole as well as the sidewalk leading from the existing public sidewalk on Old Wheeler Road to this clearing in the tree areas. So no trees would be removed. So pretty minimal. The Development Review Committee did review this project and has tentatively approved it. But as the city council doesn't have official policy on placing memorial, non-city initiated memorials on city property, we felt it was best to have the city council approve this. And basically we would do this on a case by case basis. We do know there's been some discussions, potentially of one other one, but it's not a common occurrence where we have outside organizations requesting to place memorials within city properties. So we're basically asking the council to review this. Staff will be happy to answer any questions. And then basically to concur with the Development Review Committee's approval of the proposal this evening. We're happy to answer your questions. I think Sharon Johnson May, the current president. this evening. We're happy to answer your questions. I think Sharon Johnson May, the current president of the Rotary is also available. Should she be, she should be available to answer questions as well.
She's got her hand up. If we have any questions for staff, we can go to, I guess she would be under public comment. Is that correct?
Well, before we go further, is there any conflicts? I know Tim's a Rotarian. Does this have a conflict before we do anything further? No? He can vote on it? Okay.
Yeah, it's not monetary.
Okay.
We, Rotary's gonna pay for it through donations and everything. So it has nothing to do with the city. The city will just take it over, I guess, apparently.
I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah. No, thank you. Thank you for protecting me. I do appreciate that. Sharon, no, there she is. Sharon, you're muted.
Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
We can hear you very well. Please.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for hearing us this evening. There we are.
Mr. Carr, good evening.
Good evening.
You've had a long one tonight. Now you know how this works.
My name is Sharon Johnson May and I am the president and Rotary Club of Laverne and beside me is my fellow Laverne Rotarian, George Carr. On behalf of the Laverne Rotary Club, we are honored to speak before you today on the proposed memorial garden and peace pole in honor of late Laverne resident, Dr. Garbus Durgeyan. Dr. Durgeyan was a distinguished Rotarian, a leader, a role model, a visionary, father figure, mentor, a man of faith, integrity and character. A peacemaker, a Lavernean who embodied Rotary's motto, service above self. Tonight, we seek your support in keeping his legacy alive. In 1990, former Mayor John Blickenstaff awarded Dr. Durgeyan a key to the city of Laverne. In 2016, he was honored again by then-Mayor Don Kendrick and the council with, with a special proclamation. The proclamation acknowledged Dr. Durgeyan's role in furthering the city of Laverne's international status. It celebrated his role in facilitating the establishment of Laverne's sister city in Etmyatsein, Armenia. It recognized his role as dean of the Armenian, American Armenian International College at the University of Laverne and later as its president from 1981 to 1992. It celebrated a Lavernean who had led a delegation of city officials and Rotarians to Armenia in 1985 when the first Rotary Club in the former Soviet Union was established. The proclamation further recognized him as an exemplary and distinguished peacemaker where his limitless efforts and leadership led to 27 consecutive Rotary peace conferences and more than 20 peacemaking pilgrim, pilgrimages to historic Western Armenia. At this meeting, Dr. Durgeyan said, "In all I say and in all I do, I promise to bring honor to the city of Laverne and to the Armenian people that I belong to. And above all, glory to God Almighty, from whom all blessings flow." In closing, we are grateful that staff recommended approval of the proposed memorial garden and peace pole and we humbly ask you for your support and approval of the same. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Yeah. Do we have any questions for Director Shear or for Sharon May?
Sharon, I have a question. This is Robin Carter. Hi, George. I, how long do you think it's gonna take from the time we give approval? How, how many months does, you gotta order the materials?
Well, the city has given us a year according to the, the information that we received and our plan is to have it done within the year, Robin.
Good, good. I'm so, I was thrilled to read it. I think he is so deserving and he made such an impact in our city.
Thank you. We agree.
Mr. Davis, did you want to speak before we go to public comment?
I was simply gonna say, how can I have any questions with those eloquent words?
Yes.
That is a fact. Why don't we move to public comment and we'll come back? Go ahead, Mr. Davis. Go ahead.
Councilmembers Carter, Carter's question was still illuminating, so it was very helpful.
Yeah, we'll go to public comment. JR.
Mr. Mayor, I have Joseph Gabbeldon on the line.
Mr. Gabbeldon, good evening.
Good evening. It's been a long evening. I want to say thank you to everybody for taking time out of their lives to be here for the city tonight. First, I'd like to say that I fully support this application and believe that Dr. Durgeyan was an exemplary example of an individual in our community who would deserve such recognition. That said, my request to speak is in regards to language. In the description of the request, where I quote, "As the city does not have an official policy for non-city initiated memorials and as the project would occur in a public park." To this and reflecting on this past year, where many cities across that country became embroiled in controversy of an act of vandalism upon monuments, statues and memorials, it is important that the city look forward by developing a comprehensive and well-defined policy inclusive of the elements of social conscience that would serve to ensure Laverne does everything it can to mitigate the associated risks. Additionally, we need to ensure that by having a formal policy, we can avoid any potential risk of setting precedent when it comes to any one party's individual criteria for requesting a monument, statues or memorials in our city parks. Where funding is otherwise seen as the sole criteria of a potential bias when voting, no. Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbeldon. JR.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see any other hands raised and that was the only request that we had received outside of Ms. May to, to speak on this item.
Thank you, JR. Appreciate it. We're gonna close public comment, come back to council. Mr. Crosby.
I do agree with this memorial. He was a very great man. I also do agree with the resident of making sure that we have some criteria or things so that, I don't want where we pick one over another or things like that in the future. So that it's, it's appropriate for our parks.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Lau. I got you. I got you.
No, I think this is great. I'm excited for it and I appreciate, you know, Sharon staying on late for this as well. So I will leave it at that because I know we've got more stuff, so.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Carter, any other comment?
No, no.
Councilmember Davis.
Uh, no, I'm in full support of this project.
Uh, on behalf of the city and myself being a Rotarian, I wanna thank, first of all, Angela, his wife, Johnny and Jimmy, his sons. And I wanna also thank the past Madam President Sandra McLaughlin and also the current Madam President Sharon Johnson May. Also, I wanna thank Phil May for the design. He did a fantastic job. I wanna thank the staff for going through that so well with us and we have lost an amazing man. Just a minute. And truly a friend. And this is a great memorial for him and we will move forward with this. I think it's a wonderful idea. I really appreciate the staff support. I appreciate the the Design Review Committee for doing this and it's just a wonderful testament to a man's life and his legend. And I do thank Mr. Gabbeldon. I think that's a great idea. I do support that we look at this in the future to have an ordinance that we can, we can apply to these where where like Mr. Crosby so eloquently said, we're not excluding anyone, we're including all. This will be a beautiful addition to the park. So looking very forward to this. I am 100% in support of this. With that, I need a motion.
Who would like to make it? I'll make the motion to move forward with this monument and the recommendation from Rotary.
Thank you. A second. Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Roll call.
Mayor Lau.
Aye.
Councilmember Crosby.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Heffron.
Yes.
We move to public comments and oral communications. Do we have any?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, something I did not do at introductions and I apologize for that.
Yes.
So I'll keep it brief, but I'd like to bring in Marla Pendleton.
Oh, she's been waiting. Trial by fire.
All asleep before the end of the night because I was gonna introduce her. So JR is bringing her in now. Marla, as all of you have heard, is our new finance director. And Marla is a testament to all good things come to those who wait because we have been patiently looking and we, we scored a great find in Marla. She brings numerous years of municipal finance experience. She was with the County of Riverside in the auditor's office for a number of years and then she went to City of Palm Springs. And then we snatched her from the City of Lawndale where she had spent several years and it was hard to get her away from there, but I was so happy to convince her to come be part of our team. So I'd just like to virtually introduce you to her new finance director and I know you'll get the opportunity to say hello to her at your convenience over the coming weeks and months. So.
Ms. Pendleton, you have 28 minutes. Go ahead. You have the floor.
I was gonna give a summary, but you just heard it. So.
Yes, welcome.
I just want to thank you for letting me join this beautiful city. I am so happy to be here and look forward to a long and pleasant career with you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. I did see your placard on your desk this weekend. I was looking at the bills and it was like, hey, she's here. Well, welcome. Very welcome. Hopefully we all get a chance to say hi and meet you in the very near future, but thank you for coming on to the city. We we're definitely need, we had great shoes, shoes that were big shoes, but you're gonna fill those just fine and you're gonna do a great job and we're just tickled to death to have you on board. So.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Then we will move to public comments and oral communications. Anybody in there, JR? We have Mr. Salinas, it looks like. Good evening, Mr. Salinas. There you go.
Hello again. I'd like to thank the city council for approving the photo of the office and George Gascon. And lastly, I just have a question. Has there been any, any update when we could go back to in-person council meetings? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Any update on, Mr. Russi?
Um, we tested, I shared with the council before the meeting, we had tested hybrid. We're having a little bit of a challenge with the audio. We hope to be able to get that worked out for the first part of August. As everybody knows, we're now challenged with required masking. So it's something that I will be discussing with the council over the next couple of weeks as far as coming back to the reality of coming back to meetings in person and then having to mask up. But we should have the hybrid issue worked out and then we will figure out how we want to move forward from there.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any other buddy on? Doesn't look like we have anybody on. JR, you have a phone?
We've got one more.
Cynthia.
And actually, I need to follow up with Ms. Brainerd too, as it sounded like she has some things.
Oh, she did. Yeah, please do. Ms. Gabbeldon, please. You have the floor. Good evening.
Thank you, everybody. I'm not gonna do the video anymore. It's too late. Tonight, the city of Pomona had on one of their agendas, the, a Carvana project. And as part of this Carvana project, there's 2,500 trips per day coming off of that property. And I have a couple of questions. One, were you guys all notified of this? And then two, shouldn't there be some like citywide notice, especially for those of us that live off of fruit and off of white? Or maybe any of the other larger thoroughfares? Because when I was looking this up and when I compare it to where the housing developments are gonna be there along Arrow Highway, white and fruit are gonna be heavily, heavily impacted. That's five, over 5,000 trips a day that are gonna increase on those, on that, on that thoroughfare. I'm not too sure about Arrow Highway. I mean, people will go west and east, but that is a lot. They're planning on major trucks. They're planning customers. They have a lease for that site for 25 to 30 years. This is not a short-term property. And I'm just wondering if you guys knew about this and if there's anything we can do as residents to speak back because I just found out about it about half an hour ago. The second thing I wanted everybody to know was that SB 9 and SB 10, which are the legislative bills that were coming through concerning housing, they were both stalled in Sacramento. There was incredible amount of pushback on it and SB 10 had turned into a not, a, a non-mandatory bill. SB 9 has been completely stopped right now. It could be brought up again when the, when the legislature comes back after summer session, which is in August, but right now they're stopped. And we have to keep pushing back on that. So I just wanted to share that, but I'm very, very curious about, about Carvana. People in a mobile home park down there at the end of White have been reaching out to me about this and they're very concerned that they weren't ever notified about it. And they live right there at Arrow Highway in White and that's where that giant project's gonna be going in. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to comment on the Carvana issue, Mr. Russi?
Can we wait till all public comment has been completed?
Next, we have Ms. Brainerd, good evening again. You're, you're muted.
Okay, me again. Me again. Thank you. Thank you for so long. Meeting too late, okay. Some question I bring up just, Cynthia just brought up just now. Actually, I accidentally found out from Nextdoor. Since we fall for Wyden and Wyman Avenue two years ago, I talked to so many residents in this area, Wyden Avenue. So we really, really concerned something will happen to the traffic on Wyman Avenue. Now, this project, actually, I checked online. They had meeting, their meeting's still on, okay, on my other computer. So I think as a neighbor city, Laverne supposed to just know this because it's very big influence about the traffic or may, maybe the crime, whatever. So many things will happen. It's a long-term project. I always worry about that because they relate to safety too. So I'm just thinking, if possible, we, as the neighbor city, we really should get informed. Especially the neighbors, they're not really on internet. They're not like go social media like I did. And then the neighbors, they, they, nobody know it because I just found out tonight. So I'm thinking, if possible, things to, could be just more transparency. I don't know if a city already get informed. It's a big deal. It's a big project. So, so the next thing, what I concern is in-person meeting. It's very confused. Even people like me, pretty much good at computers, zone meeting, I did online, my, my business online. So, but most people in Laverne, especially the old resident neighbor, I present them to fighting for Wyman Avenue two years ago. And then they, they definitely concern all those things, but they not really able to not get used to go zone meeting. So in-person meetings should be the must. I brought up in June. I, I think it's May, May meeting. And then we expect we'll open in June, even, even six feet less people in the room, we can stand outside and listen to, to communicate, but not really like you get lost on zone meeting. It's really get lost, even myself, right? I always expecting come to this wrong topic because I get confused too. So just thank you for listening and it's very appreciates three vote to support us, you know, so, but I just so appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Mr. Allison, you're on.
Uh, yeah, I'll be, I'll be brief. I know it's late. You know, we find ourselves in an important time in history. I, I'm just requesting the city leadership take a time to consider the world that we are shifting to. Instead of the world that we want to so tightly cling to. Change is coming. You can be a part of defining it or you can stand idle and be steamrolled by it. But I would really like this city to really consider its role in defining a bright, productive future for all who will help this city be the best it can be. Mayor Don Kendrick used to always say, if anything good can happen, it can happen in Laverne. I believe Mayor Kendrick then and I believe in that truth now. So please let's work together to actually make this city the best it can be. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. JR.
Mayor, I have looked in our junk folder. I've looked in our normal email and have not seen anything. Let me just take one minute and check with the city clerk to make sure that I got public comment. Please hold on. Mayor, I've confirmed that it doesn't look like we have any other public comment tonight.
We will go ahead and close public comment and we move to, oh, Mr. Russi, do you want to answer some of those questions?
Sure, I can answer a little bit about Carvana and I don't know if Eric is still listening on there. I, I know that the city of Pomona was requiring Carvana because they had submitted an application to do some neighborhood workshops. And so they did request and we provided them with an expansive list of, of addresses that were adjacent to the project to do notification of the neighborhood workshop. I am not familiar with whatever meeting that whatever they're considering tonight. Eric, are you at all?
Yeah, I'm kind of curious about that. What were they doing tonight?
I'm not familiar what they're talking about this evening, but they're, they're at the very early stages of filing an application there. It would require a conditional use permit, which is a lengthy process. A full environmental review. Um, so I've spoken to their director and it will be going through that process. So I'm not sure exactly what the council is discussing this evening about it, but I definitely want it to be to grant an approval for the project as proposed, because there's a lot of steps that still have to happen, including further neighborhood outreach.
And we would certainly, we have expressed and we will continue to express concerns about traffic. That is very true. We would not want any traffic coming up White Avenue. It would need to be something that would need to be circulated somewhere within the city of Pomona and not through Laverne. So something that we're sensitive to and we'll be providing our comments over the course of the process for sure.
Well, it'd be very interesting because I was at the, the Texaco station or the Shell station across from Target. And here I'm filling up my truck and all of a sudden here comes a Carvana single carrier pulling up in the gas station. So again, we talked about the traffic and Ms. Gavaldon was very right, right on. It's like, these are big trucks that they're hauling. You know, 10 or 15 vehicles, as we discussed before, but that means they're coming up here. That is a hauler and it is a car and it's Carvana. So we need to keep close tabs on that and watch.
In discussion with them about fixing this with their temporary use, never mind their long-term. So.
Exactly.
We're, we're trying to address it in the immediate.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I think that was, Mr. Rusty, was that it?
That was it. That was the only one that I had on there was the Carvana issue.
We will close the public comment and we have closed that. Let's go to council comments and conference meeting reports. Who wants to start? You're all exhausted. Okay, we're going to go with Mr. Davis.
I'll go ahead and start a pretty light schedule for me. But I do want to celebrate a Cal Bear golfer, Colin Mirakawa, who won the British Open in an outstanding fashion and a local junior golfer who won the LA City Flight A Championship.
Godparents, proud child. That's wonderful. Thank you.
That's it.
Councilmember Lau.
So yes, I wanted to start off with a couple of thank yous and just highlight, I think, some of the really good things about this meeting. I know it's been long and I know we're probably itching to, to stretch our legs and all that kind of good stuff, but I, I wanted to, first of all, give a thank you to Chief Paz and to Officer Gutierrez for taking the time to speak with me on the Gascon issue. And I wanted to, you know, to highlight that, you know, although we don't necessarily agree on all points and I won't go into the, into the, you know, details of all of our conversation that we had, but both men did spend a considerable amount of time speaking with me and we walked away from that conversation. Still friends and, and, and that's what I want us to be cognizant of as we continue to work together with each other and with our constituents. And I want to say a thank you to this council. I think that the conversations that we've been having during our council meetings, even when we don't agree, have been amazing because I think it's important for us to be able to freely speak about where our positions are, what experiences we bring to the table and why we feel the way we, we do, because I think that's important. So I really want to, to highlight that and I really want to really say I'm thankful and grateful for those conversations because I think that's how we model the way for other cities and other people to, to say, this is what government should look like. We should have conversations and it shouldn't devolve into name-calling or, you know, anonymous Facebook messages, you know, or anything like that, right? We should be able to have these conversations and I am grateful for this council and I'm grateful for the staff and the folks that, you know, work in our city that allow us to have these conversations. And I'm grateful for a very dedicated public who, especially for the, those of you that I can see on Zoom, I know there are others, you know, that are watching this, but it is a late night for all of you too. And I appreciate that because that means that's an engaged population and I hope that you are talking to your neighbors, sharing your different opinions and understanding different perspectives. And again, we might not all agree, but we all have to live together. And so I think that we can find much more in common with one another than we might not, you know, know about otherwise. So I encourage you to have those conversations and those, those moments. So the other thing I did want to say too, and I don't want to steal anyone's thunder. So, you know, Mayor Hepburn, I will let you talk in more detail and about it, but there was a ribbon cutting on Friday for a new business in town called In Motion Dentist. And I just wanted to share this with the community because I I have anxiety about the dentist. I'm not a fan, but I go because, you know, you have to go because you're an adult, right? And my parents have spent all this money on my braces for me not to take, keep up my teeth. But I think what was really exciting and really cool about this business, about this particular dentist office is that it does actually cater to folks with special needs. So the, the way that they built their waiting room area is, is conducive for folks that may have sensory issues. They have sensory equipment that helps, you know, put patients at ease. And there's even a room where there's, I don't know what to call it, but it basically if you're wheelchair-bound, rather than having to heft you out of a wheelchair and put you into a dentist chair, you can actually be pulled onto a ramp that sort of inclines back. So you can stay in your wheelchair while they're doing your dental work. So I, I had never seen that before at a dentist office. And so I wanted to share that if you, you know, don't have a dentist, maybe check that out if, but spread the word. I think that's really amazing. The other thing that I thought was kind of neat, but I don't necessarily want to use this part of the service, but thought it was kind of cool. They, they're called In Motion Dentists because they're mobile as well. So they can come to your house, which I think is awesome for maybe a population that may not be able to drive or, you know, maybe it's a procedure that might, you know, knock you out, you know, and you feel safer if they came to you. I thought that was really cool. So definitely a place to check out. They're on foothill over by Mr. D's diner. So excited about that. And then last but not least, you know, we all heard about the, the mask mandate, obviously for LA County. It is not great looking at the numbers in terms of hospitalizations, particularly because the numbers are amongst the unvaccinated. So if you're concerned, if you have questions, I definitely urge you to go do your research and weigh out your options and get vaccinated. I, I get that there are religious reasons. There are medical reasons that may prevent you from doing it, but I think the closer we can get to normal by getting more people vaccinated, that would be great. So again, thanks to everybody and, you know, be kind.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Thank you. Council, Councilmember Crosby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Lau's comments on, on the discussion we had tonight. We had some really, really good discussions tonight and where, where I believe this, this council is open to many diverse opinions and but we still can, can come together and I believe working together and I, and I appreciate Councilmember Lau's and Councilmember Davis's opinions always and appreciate what they put in to the conversation tonight too. And hopefully that we can engage in conversations with, with District Attorney and appreciate their point of view. I also want to highlight our Youth in Action Family Committee and, and the work they've done before I got on to the committee and the continuing since I've been on the committee. Really appreciate all, all that they're doing. We, we want to protect all of our, especially our youth and residents. We don't want to hurt local businesses, but sometimes we need to make sure and protect those that need to be protected as well. And so appreciate that. I just have, I know, Mr. Rusty, I want to ask you about what is the status on our fire chief? I know we are supposed to be coming with that pretty soon. Um, and just didn't know if we have an update or things on that. And other than that, it was, it was a very good productive meeting tonight.
Would you like me to ask that, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Uh, yeah, thank you. So we are finalizing the background process. Should be done with that this week. We are also finalizing the terms of an agreement that I need to bring back to council. I'm hopeful that that should be done in the next couple of days as well. I was hoping that if either on the next agenda or if I can get a special meeting scheduled to get that done sooner, so I can get him, the individual to give notice to his other employer, that would be my goal.
And I, I would push for the sooner the better.
That is my goal as well. I have a limited amount of time with Chief Waterhouse and I know he is anxious. He will continue to do the work, but is anxious to also complete this assignment.
Hence the word interim. Retired.
That will work for council. I certainly would like to do that. So I will be reaching out to you tomorrow to see if that's possible.
Good.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter.
Yes, real quick. Last week we had a gathering, Gold Line planned a gathering for all city staff and the construction authority and some of the other cities, their mayors to come. Tim, myself, Bob was there and Mayor. And it was wonderful. Our LA City Mayor Garcetti came out to our city, which, you know, he doesn't, he hasn't been out to all the others. So I'm thrilled he got to see our city to understand how close we are to the fairgrounds. But, you know, who knows how long he'll be our mayor though. He's got that new appointment. And, but no, it was very nice. We got to do a photo op. We got to see where the station's going to be. We got to stand on the ground to get a feel of everything coming together and they had diagrams of the future of our station. So it's coming.
Great job. That was fun. That was a lot of fun, actually. Mr. Garcetti was, I didn't think he was going to leave. We were just chatting away and he's, you know, it was a great conversation. You know, again, as elected, it's when you make these contacts with all these other electeds and especially, you know, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles and, and, you know, the gold line authority and, and Robin, thank you. You and Tim Sandoval did a great job and you've done a great job. It's moving. If we just, if we just get that funding for the another 500 million bucks and we can do that right now, hopefully we can push that all the way to Claremont and then Montclair. So.
Yes.
As they say, the journey continues. Uh, but no, nice job. You've done a great job on that gold line.
Thank you.
Yeah, Wendy couldn't have said it better. She, that In Motion Dentist, it was a party. I mean, I, I Councilmember Davis was there, Mayor Pro Tem Davis and Councilmember Lau. And I'm sorry you guys missed it. It's the first ribbon cutting we've had since COVID hit. Made that very clear. But I think Wade is the gentleman, he's the dentist and Crystal, I think is his wife, if I'm not mistaken, and the two boys. She designed it. And then he had a group that built it, but it's amazing. But the party, I, I think what 60, 60, 80 people there and had food and uh, it's just nice. It's just for people to come and spend that kind of money in our town and put a business in here. And you made it very clear, the backbone of our community is our small businesses and our community we have, whether it be restaurants, dentistry, clothing or retail. But did a fantastic job. It was, it was so much fun to be there. And then also, you know, we are, this, this is pretty serious right now with this masking. And it, it, you know, we really need to think seriously what we're doing here because for those that have been hesitant because of the COVID shot, please don't be hesitant anymore. Get your shot. It does protect you. And for those that don't want to, unfortunately, we're, we're at the point right now where we're having to mask up because people have made decisions not to and it's, it's, it's tough. We, we don't want our businesses to shut down. We, we don't want our cities to shut down anymore. So please reconsider. If you can, please get your vaccination. They are everywhere. You can get it anywhere now. They're giving incentives out. They're giving tickets to sports games. I mean, come on, if, if you've been hesitant because you know, let's do it, please. Let's do it to protect us, protect our, our residents, but also protect our elder people and we don't want to spread this. We want to, we want to move on and go past this. So please vaccinate. If you choose to, please vaccinate. And as one of the previous callers had just stated, the wonderful blessing about the council is the fact that we come and go, we move in and out, we bring our, we bring our strengths. We, we learn our weaknesses and we learn from our strengths. We learn from other people, our communication. We come and go. I think that's the blessing of a council. You know, we all serve our time. We try to help our community. We help our residents. We, we have a vision and differences are very important because we learn from everybody's differences. We learn from conversation. I think tonight was a perfect example of it, but and we're blessed to be able to do this and while our time is here until, you know, we decide to move on or our residents decide to choose someone else, we're trying our best to make the decisions for the best of all of our community at every single time. We all take a lot of time, a lot of studying, a lot of reading and meetings that last four to six to seven hours. And this is staff's time. Uh, and so we take this seriously. Uh, you know, we're not going to always agree and that's the wonderful thing about it because out of this conversation, I learned a lot tonight because we had an open discussion. We, we disagreed on items, but all of us take a piece of that and go, you know what? Let's think about that, you know, let's think about that down the road. So I do appreciate my council. I do appreciate staff's time. I think as we move forward, it just, we're blessed to actually do this. So it is a lot of work, but I, I appreciate everybody's time and everybody's, all the staff's effort. So thank you, guys. With that, we have a, we have a need for a closed session. Is that correct?
I almost forgot. It's late.
I didn't.
Yes, thank you for that. It's with Labor Negotiator and it's under Government Code Section 54957 dot six. Meeting with all interest negotiators and the group is the Firefighters Association.
We will be adjourning in the closed session. We will not be reporting out. Our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, August 2nd, 2021. I just want to say one thing to the family of the Waste Management employee that passed away on Wheeler Avenue. Our hearts and prayers go out to you. We do appreciate your guys' service. No matter what happens, that's a human being that passed away while he was working. Uh, he was just about ready. He had actually, I think, pulling his papers after 40 years of service with waste management. So please, our hearts and prayers go out to his family and to his friends. And please, we do appreciate what you guys do for this community. Thank you.
We will pass that on to Terry and Waste Management.
Please do. Thank you. We are adjourned at 10:39 PM, 7:19. We're going to take a five-minute break. Right? We move out and come back.
Good, let's do it.
Hey, we're adjourned. Cut us off, JR.
Reciced.
We're recessed.
Uh, we are recessed, sorry.
No worries.